Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, June 2, 2021. Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert, I don't think has joined us quite yet. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Pastor?
Here.
Commissioner Raskin?
Here.
Commissioner Reese? You're muted.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, and Chair Landris?
I'm here. Before we go to the Planning Director's Report in view of the likely sort of process for this meeting and the fact that we do not have any callers registered for general public comment, I'd like to invite a motion for us to take items 11 and 12 on the on the agenda in advance of item 10.
Done.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Landris?
Yes, thank you very much. So we will, we will hear items 11 and 12 before item 10. All right, let's go to the Planning Director's Report. David Martin?
Good evening, Commission. So upcoming, at your next meeting on June 16th is a development review permit for 1633 26th Street. The Vons project at 710 Broadway. And then a development review permitted in track map for an office project at 1650 Euclid. July 7th is the shore application to add the affordable lodging units along 2nd Street. And then your July 21st meeting is canceled. Jing, is there also a meeting next week for the?
Yes, sorry, I missed that one.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I thought. In the spirit of meeting every week, as Chair Landris mentioned, you're also meeting on June 9th, and that's to hear the tax amendment and conditional use permit for the Oceana Hotel on Ocean Avenue. City Council action, so the May 25th, May 26th budget study sessions were last week. I'd like to thank the Commission for your support on the positions requested for our department. The, you know, no final decisions are made yet, but there seem to be good support for those positions and for helping to move projects forward more quickly. So hopefully that turns out well. Again, appreciate the Commission's support. Upcoming at council. So they're actually meeting tomorrow night, acknowledge council member McKeown's retirement and just discuss and direct options to fill the vacancy. I'm sorry, that's, that's tonight, at the same time we're meeting, so. So they're actually having simultaneous meeting to us, that's tonight, June 2nd. And then June 8th will be the first in-person meeting. And we will be taking an item that focuses on the continued efforts on economic recovery. One of the main items is the extension of the Santa Monica Outdoors Programs, program which has allowed outdoor dining, the parklets, the sidewalk dining, restaurants operating in parking lots in some situations. So we're taking forward a proposal to allow a lot of those things to continue even as we come out of COVID. And then, of course, the housing element update. You know, meeting tonight and tomorrow night, and the council hearing is set for June 15th. And draft EIR will be released on June 23rd. And then staff is anticipating transmitting the draft of the housing element to HCD on July 1st. That concludes my report and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions? Are we going to be hearing the EIR or is that going to go straight to council?
You will be reviewing. We'll, you know, send it to the Commission. And I think the Commission has the opportunity to provide comment on that, you know, during the public review period, so. I think we can discuss if there's an interest in discussing it ahead of consideration of the final housing element, we can probably do that, too.
And so when is the, if the public, when is the public review period? It starts the 23rd and then closes?
Rachel, can you add your address?
Coming on a very, very tight timeline, and so we are planning on releasing it for 45 days as required by CEQA.
So?
It will be somewhere around the beginning of August, yeah.
Right, so let's, let's just look at the calendar right now before we, before we move on. Do we, is our first meeting of August within the 45 days? I'm trying to bring up the calendar, but my computer is slow. August 4th, is that? The 23rd to the 23rd is 30 days. And then 10 days is this?
I think it is.
Yeah, that's?
Yes.
That's the, it looks like 45 days would close around the 6th or 7th.
Correct.
Okay, so let's plan, right, so we should probably, let's put that on the count, let's put that on the Commission's calendar for August 4th. And then, just for clarification, the council will be in person starting June 8th, or they're just trying it out and then they'll go back to? Is the 15th going to be in person as well?
Yeah, that, that is my understanding. Oh, go ahead, David.
That's the idea. No, that's right, they're, that's the first meeting, well, they'll be in person, but assuming nothing goes awry, awry, they will continue in person from then on.
In chambers or in the East Wing? In council chambers?
Yeah, they are meeting in the council chambers.
Yes, okay. And there will be an opportunity for remote participation for the public and for Commission reports?
Yes, so staff who are giving reports will be in, in person, from my understanding. And there will also be an opportunity for the public to comment remotely.
All right, any other questions before we move on? Okay, seeing none, let us now head to, all right, here's the usual airplane announcements. Please note tonight's procedures for public comment. We have been accepting registration for oral public comment through 3:30 PM today, which is two hours prior to the, to the meeting. And if you are a member of the public who registered for public comment, please check your email for call-in instructions. Those instructions have been emailed. They were emailed at the start of this meeting. Written comments received up until noon today have been read by the Commission. Comments received after 12 noon today will be considered part of the record of the proceedings, but will not be posted online with the Planning Commission's agenda, might not be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and will not be read aloud during public comment during the meeting. And I want to make sure that everyone is aware that to the extent that this meeting possibly may be continued until tomorrow night for continuing coverage of the housing element, that the public comment that takes place today will be the public comment for our discussions. So let me also say that the moderator chat limitations. If you are with us on BlueJeans, the moderator chat function in BlueJeans is for technical help from administrative staff only. It is not for public comment. The Commission cannot see the moderator chat. And comments will not be forwarded to the Commission or entered into the record. With that, let me ask my colleagues if they have any announcement. Okay, David, did you have something here?
I did. I just happened to open the email from the city clerk letting us know that they're going to delay returning to council chambers until June 22nd. So they're having some technical difficulties, so we'll keep you posted, but it won't be when, when we mentioned earlier. It will be June 22nd, it looks like.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. Breaking news, June, June, June 8th and June 15th will be, will continue being remote. Okay, so moving on to the reordered item 11, written communications. Written communications, I just want to acknowledge that we received one piece of public correspondence underwritten communication. I trust that everybody's had a look at that. And we have, moving to item 12, no callers registered for general public comment. So there is no, there's no action to be taken there. With that, let's move to item 10A. As you recall at our last meeting, we had issues related to translation services at the Planning Commission. And so we agendized this as an item. I'm going to give a brief report and then turn it over to Jing. I, you know, sort of in the, in case of emergency break glass, I immediately sent a note to our city manager pointing out the impact of the failure of having translation services at our meetings, the effect that it could have on our hearings for the remainder of the fiscal year. I really want to express our appreciation to Lain Dilg and to Lisa Parson in the city manager's office for responding so quickly. And I'm going to turn it over to staff to let us know what's happening, but it is, it is clear that the council has a commitment to making translation services available. And the city manager's office is doing everything possible to ensure that 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 commitment to language justice is pursued in full. So let me turn it over to David and Jing for the update.
Yeah, thank you. Just giving you a brief update on this after the last meeting, when the Commission requested that this item be agendized at your next meeting, which is this one. We have had the opportunity to liaise with staff in the city manager's office. If you followed the budget study session last week, there has been budget allocated for this purpose in the upcoming fiscal year. And we have also, every meeting for the Planning Commission between now through the end of this fiscal year, we will have a translator on standby, and so tonight we have an interpreter available. We've had, we've had no requests for translation, but in case somebody, you know, needs it, we have someone available. So that's what we're doing through the end of the year. And again, we are working with the CMO's office with respect to, you know, how this applies. Obviously, it's an organization-wide. It affects, you know, all boards and commissions, the council, to come up with a sort of holistic approach to this. But we do have it available through now to the end of this year. And we will provide an update as, as situations change.
Great. So it seems that it will make the most sense for us to put off amendments to our rules of order for the time being, since the provision of those services is consistent with our rule of order, since people can request it even up till the last minute. And it strikes me that we'll want to take another look at our rules of order once we have more clarity about what's happening with remote public comment and the evolution of rules related to the Brown Act. I still have concerns about pre-registration, but I know that staff is doing the best they can, and we want to try to keep rules as consistent as possible so the public doesn't have whiplash from, from changes from one week to the next. So other comments on this before we move on? All right, well, okay, here we are, 10B, folks. The housing element, get comfortable. I want to say that this item, after a vote of the Commission, may be continued to a future date for continued commission discussion and possible recommendation to council. I want to say upfront, before we hand this off to everyone, that it is anticipated that tonight we will hear a complete staff report, and we will then have questions of staff from the Commission. I want to ask everyone to keep your, keep the questions prior to public, public comment to the minimum possible for clarification only. In other words, if you really ask the question, if you think that people who are calling in should hear the answer before they call in. That's really the only reason, because we really want to get to the public first, and then we can go around with our questions and, and get into, getting, get into our discussion. So with that, let me turn it over to Jing Yo for the presentation. I do want to remind everyone who is listening that we have had multiple presentations on this topic. My dearest hope is that the staff is going to focus on what's new, what we really need to focus on for our discussions and recommendations. I hope that you've been following for the past few months. Staff has been tremendously open with the public and with us in terms of making multiple presentations over the past few months as their thought and work has evolved. We've also had an item at every single Planning Commission meeting where we have had some fairly extensive discussions about how we think the planet, how we think the housing element should go. So forgive me for that long preamble, but I do hope that we can stay focused on the work. It's quite a lot. We're going to be here for a while, and staff has worked very diligently and very hard under very difficult circumstances this past year to get this to us. So with that, let me turn it over to Jing.
Thank you, Chair. So before we kick it off, I just, you know, want to acknowledge the, the lot of hard work that the Commission has put into this. The community's participation, the Technical Working Group participation, the Rent Control Board, Housing Commission, obviously the City Council as well. This has been an extremely fast process, and we're very pleased to be here tonight to present to you the draft housing element. I also wouldn't, would be remiss to not acknowledge the, the extremely hardworking planning staff that has been working literally around the clock to deliver this on time today, literally not, not sleeping. So Rachel Quatt, Gary Fukui, Ross Herman, and Stephen Zakami, you know, have just been superstars in this. And I want to acknowledge also Jim Kemper from the Housing Division. And Natasha Kiesko, Maggie Willis from Human Services, Mark Ammaral, Haka Morizai from Rent Control, and Tracy Condon, who've been amazing partners in this work as well. And tonight, we also have the HRNA staff, Paul Silverman, Tom Jensen, Jenna Gray, Ada Peng, and John Douglas, our housing element consultant, are all on the call tonight. So it's really been quite an amazing effort. And of course, Heidi, who comes up with, you know, deals with all our crazy questions for all of this. So with that, Ross, can you fire up the PowerPoint? Let's get started. So yeah, let's jump to the first slide. So this is just a kind of high-level agenda for the Planning Commission's meeting tonight. So we're going to go through kind of identifying components of what it means to have a compliant housing element. That was, the broadest direction from the council was to produce a compliant housing element. We'll then run through the goals and policies in the housing element, and then we'll get into the meat of the proposed housing programs, which are the, basically the implementation actions. And they are organized, we're not going to go through like individual program by program. They are kind of organized into three key buckets of equitable housing access, housing production, and the suitable sites inventory, and then we will finish up with programs on housing stability. And then we will then run into the Planning Commission's discussion. As indicated earlier, the City Council will be reviewing the draft on June 15th. And what we're looking for from the Planning Commission.
If I may just briefly to acknowledge that Commissioner Lambert has joined us and is with us.
Excellent. So at the end of your discussion, what we're looking for is for the Plan Commission's recommendation to the council on the draft housing element update. Next slide. So this is just a reminder of the direction that we were working under from the March 30th meeting of the council, when we presented the draft concepts. And you can see here, you know, the overarching direction to prepare a compliant housing element and to prioritize affordable housing on city-owned sites. They gave direction with respect to dispersion of sites throughout the city with consideration of necessary zoning changes to incentivize housing, pursuing 100% affordable housing overlay, and then explore a variety of ideas with respect to home ownership, ADU incentives, and densifying the R1. So all of that, we have been through all that analysis, taken that direction, and presented recommendations in the draft housing element. Next slide. This is something that, you know, we've, we've talked about as, as we, we always try to level set with respect to the housing element. You know, there's certainly, this is a big change, you know, in terms of planning for, for housing in this community. It's certainly a, you know, takes us a little bit away, or, you know, something different than what was established in the loose, but I think at its core, you know, we, we have kept our eye on the fact that this is planning for housing, it's planning for people's homes, and the benefits of housing stability in the community, you know, really can't be understated in terms of what that means for people to have a stable home over their head, or to have a roof over their head. And, you know, with the pandemic of the past year and ongoing, you know, certainly we saw the disparate impacts in terms of racial and socioeconomic inequities and who was impacted by that. Next slide. As you heard me allude to, this housing element is, is truly guided by, by the community vision. So it's not a, you know, complete abandonment of the loose or what have you. You know, as you can see in the distribution of sites, it very much is rooted in the growth strategy that was set forth in the loose, and then it's augmented by changes in state law and that are mandated to be included in this housing element. Next slide. And what are some of those changes? So, you know, what's mandated by, by state law is kind of a couple of things that are really, you know, big influencers in this, in this draft housing element in this sixth cycle. One is really about encouraging housing production, you know, that is, you know, something that kind of permeates through a, a lot of the housing legislation that has been brought forth since 2017. So you can see, you know, there's, there's provisions that have been included in the government code indicating that zoning must be appropriate to accommodate lower-income housing, and you know, that it needs to be at densities high enough to accommodate housing at that scale. And, and so, you know, we have quite a bit of work around testing prototypes for financial feasibility to demonstrate that housing is able to be accommodated, you know, with respect to development standards that are established by the city. And a brand-new thing in this, in this cycle is affirmatively furthering fair housing. This was established in the 2018 slate of housing legislation. It requires cities to take deliberate actions to, to explicitly address, combat, and relieve disparities resulting from past and current patterns of segregation, foster more inclusive communities. So, you know, this is something that isn't entirely new. You know, the city has always had to follow federal law in that regard in preparation of assessment of fair housing. And so that is, you know, when we looked to policies, you know, really, we looked to that assessment of fair housing that was just completed April of last year, and, you know, the, looked at historical analysis and data to lead us to recommendations. Next slide. So in looking at the purpose of tonight's meeting, you know, these are questions that we kind of wanted to start with, so you have them in your mind as we jump into the presentation, and we will have this as a concluding slide as well. I think what we're looking for from you is are the realized goals and policies appropriate with respect to this draft? Does it adequately address fair housing issues and affirmably further fair housing? And are the proposed programs sufficient to accomplish all of the objectives that you see on the screen there? And next slide. Before we, we jump in, just wanted to go over some of the, you know, how, how we got to this point. It was kind of a very rapid and different outreach process than we're used to doing in these strategic planning efforts. It really started with the launch of the, the website last summer, and then brought us into kind of educational webinars, you know, that we ran to bring people up to speed, you know, on what this process is and what to expect. And you can see that most recently, we've had to use a lot of digital outreach models, given the pandemic, to, to reach audiences. So, you know, we did a lot of online surveys. And March 16th, you know, was a survey that was launched of the draft concepts of the housing element with 298 responses across four separate surveys. So people were able to take, you know, surveys across each strategy if they wanted to. And we can see here in terms of the, the outcomes of that, a majority of respondents, you know, were in favor of prioritizing housing over commercial, ordering, modifying parking requirements, and reducing minimum unit sizes if certain amenities were provided. And they were generally split on whether additional housing should be allowed on single-unit zone parcels, and whether additional height should be given for higher affordability requirements. Next slide. And just continuing from the, from that survey with the draft concepts in terms of housing stability, we can see that this is kind of tracking with the discussions we had with our Technical Working Group that in many cases, people are that in many cases, people are unaware, are not sure of where to seek help if they're facing eviction. High rents, you know, are a barrier to housing for most. And supportive additional programs like the pilot right to council and the like are something that people are in favor of. And people were also, respondents were slightly more supportive of option A. Ultimately, that's not council's direction, but we wanted to share that in terms of, you know, where the respondents of the survey ended up. In terms of equitable housing access, you can see that respondents were split on, there wasn't kind of a majority showing up here. So there was respondents responding encouraging affordable housing and not disadvantaged areas incentivized housing in areas where housing is not historically provided, allowing more units where one unit is currently permitted, and opening up religious institutions for affordable housing production. So in taking the council's direction, the community's input, you know, that led to the recommendations that are in the draft. So next section, and I'm going to turn it over. Oh, actually, I think I'm taking this too. So before, let's jump into this first section of what is a compliant housing element. And you can see here that in terms of, there is a checklist. So this is really, we just pulled from the checklist that HCD gives to cities as you submit, give that transmittal in terms of everything that is required. So, you know, we went through and made sure that the draft element includes all of these components of a compliant element. And next slide. Is in terms of the components, that the main components of the compliant housing element include, as you heard me indicate before, affirmatively furthering fair housing, and also RINA compliance. So there's two parts, two major components that are influencing the goals, policies, and programs. You know, one is really about fair housing, and one is about kind of getting to the numbers, demonstrating that the city has the zone capacity for the 8,895 RINA units. And how do we do that? We'll talk later in this presentation about the suitable sites inventory. That's literally how the city demonstrates that there's capacity, and also accessory dwelling units as a strategy to get there. The draft housing element, next slide, is divided into five chapters. So we have an introduction, which is an overview of the housing strategy. There is a chapter on affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is required. There's Chapter Three is goals and policies. Chapter Four is kind of a summary of the SSI report in terms of land available for housing. And Chapter Five is implementation programs. And then there are a series of technical appendices to the housing element. And the housing element itself is really grounded, almost four main principles of production, stability, you know, where to locate housing, and equitable housing access. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve at the moment, who is going to take us through the goals and.
Great, thanks Jing. So in this next section, we'll be going over the seven goals that create the framework for how we're going to meet our housing needs. The goals focus on affordable and market-rate housing production, affirmatively furthering fair housing, housing assistance, addressing homelessness, balancing housing with other city goals, including economic sustainability, and also ensuring equal housing opportunities. Next slide. So starting off with goal number one is the production of new housing that is sustainable, innovative, safe, and resilient, appropriate with the surrounding neighborhood, offers opportunities for active and healthy living, including walking and biking, and increases equitable housing opportunities. So meeting our housing target will require new policies and programs to increase housing production. Policies include ensuring that we have adequate zoning sites for all types of housing near transportation, and also in areas that have historically excluded diverse housing opportunities, including incentives for affordable housing development, encourage adaptive reuse, and also promoting the use of innovative and sustainable construction techniques and materials, and to ensure a streamlined housing review process. Next slide. The goal number two is housing production for all income categories, including the community's workforce and most vulnerable communities. In efforts to address high housing costs where many of our workers cannot afford to live in the city, our policies consist of finding innovative ways for public and private financing for the development of affordable housing, using available resources, including city-owned land and housing trust funds, to help affordable housing providers with production. Advocate to the federal and state to provide funding to produce affordable housing and continue to provide development and processing incentives to our housing developers at the local level, and also to work with our local nonprofit community organizations to find new funding sources. Next slide. Goal three is the preservation of the existing housing supply, and also to prevent the displacement of existing tenants. Key-restricted and affordable housing and rent-controlled units, as we know, contribute to housing affordability. Preserving and rehabilitating our existing housing stock also helps to keep residents in their homes. And therefore, our policies consist of continuing to support the city's rent control law, encouraging the preservation of naturally occurring and restricted affordable rental housing to ensure the replacement of multi-unit housing that is demolished, consistent with state law, or in other words, consistent with SB 330, providing rehab grants to extend the use of our aging residential buildings, and also to provide resident protections during any rehabilitation. Next slide. Goal four is having a community that provides equitable housing access to all neighborhoods. So in efforts to address the historic housing patterns of segregation, policies under this goal consist of promoting access to environmentally healthy neighborhoods that offer transportation, jobs, high-performance schools, and residential amenities in areas that have historically excluded certain segments of the population, and also equitable distribution of all housing types for the most vulnerable communities and the housing insecure. Next slide. Goal five is housing for persons experiencing homelessness. The city has had a long history of investing in housing and supportive services to prevent and address the impacts of homelessness. So these policies include continuing to encourage a regional fair share approach to providing housing opportunities and assistance to the homeless, and also to continue to provide housing and supportive case management services to. Next slide. Goal six is the provision of housing assistance and supportive programs and services to extremely low, very low, low, and moderate income households, and also households with special needs, families, seniors, and the homeless. Policies under this goal are geared towards providing financial and technical housing assistance in the form of rental assistance and outreach to both tenants and landlords to increase the awareness of housing programs. Next slide. And finally, goal number seven, which is to eliminate housing discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, gender, gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, age, marital status, national origin, ancestry, familial status, income level, source of income, disability, veteran or military status, genetic information, or other such characteristics. So we've updated the language of this goal to include all the protections that are now mirrors the California Fair Employment and Housing Act. The policies under this goal include continuing to enforce fair housing laws by the city's Public Rights Division, to continue to provide legal assistance to tenants facing eviction, and to continue to engage in community outreach to provide information on fair housing laws. So that is a brief summary of the proposed goals and policies. And I'll move it along to Rachel, who will be discussing the programs to affirmatively furthering fair housing. Next up in Section Three.
Thank you, Steve. Next slide. So as Jing mentioned, part of the requirement for the housing element is a section on affirmatively furthering fair housing and providing an assessment of fair housing. Pursuant to AB 686, housing elements must include a discussion of how the city or county is affirmatively furthering fair housing. And this includes a summary of the outreach efforts to all segments and community. The housing element must include an assessment of fair housing issues, including patterns and trends, local data and knowledge, and a summary of the fair housing issues. In addition, the inventory must show that it's not only accommodating arena, but it's also serving the purpose of, you know, contributing to desegregation and really fostering inclusive and equitable communities. The housing element also, housing element law also says that affirmatively furthering fair housing, we must identify and prioritize the contributing factors to fair housing, as well as establishing the goals and actions necessary to affirmatively further fair housing and promote housing for all. Next slide. As we have mentioned before in the past, Santa Monica's neighborhoods are largely influenced by discriminatory zones of the past, including exclusionary zoning and redlining and covenants. As you can see here, you know, we provided the redlining map that shows a large majority of the affordable housing developments that have occurred in the past have largely occurred in the red-zoned areas. And this pretty much correlates to the patterns that we see today of where renter-occupied households are. As you can see in the map on the right, you'll see that the concentration fairly, pretty much mirrors the redlined areas. In addition, next, you'll see that the patterns of non-white, next. The patterns of non-white population also mirrors that, you know, redlined areas that you see. And that also correlates with, next slide. It also correlates with the low to moderate income population, which is really concentrated around the I-10 freeway, as you can see here. And also, you know, kind of largely mirrors the redlined areas. And these are all maps that are shown in the Housing Elements chapter for affirmatively furthering fair housing. Next slide. As you can see here, you know, part of the reason why we got a large allocation in the RINA cycle, for this RINA cycle, is the fact that Santa Monica is a high-resource area. This is a map showing the TCAC high-resource areas. And you can see here, you know, pretty much where we have a high, we're a high-resource city with slightly lower resources, of course, right near the freeways, you know, adjacent to the freeways. And so, you know, our RINA allocation of 69% of affordable housing really shows that, you know, they want, the state wants to show that we are making efforts to, you know, promote housing in high-resource areas. And so, one of the strategies that we are proposing is, of course, allocating city-owned land for affordable housing, as well as leveraging city funds in the development of affordable housing, and reducing parking requirements for supportive housing development. Next slide. Other programs that were, that are proposed in the housing element to affirmatively further fair housing includes the provision of 100% affordable housing overlay, which we'll talk about, as well as allowing housing as a permitted use in areas that formerly prohibited housing, as well as modifying standards to increase the likelihood of housing occurring in areas where such housing has not formally occurred, such as the areas of Main Street and Montana. In addition, one of the things that we will talk about today is potentially allowing more housing opportunities in single-family zoned areas. Next slide. The first program is Program 2A. This is the affordable housing overlay that we have talked about before in the past. As you're well aware, AB 1763 basically applies to areas within a half-mile of a major transit stop and only for affordable housing projects up to 80% AMI. So affordable housing projects that are located in these areas within half-mile transit are afforded the extra three stories. They're also afforded unlimited density as well as no minimum parking requirements. And so what we're proposing to do is really to apply this overlay across the entire city. And we're also proposing that they be allowed unlimited height. Next slide. And in addition, the affordable housing overlay that is being proposed in the housing element would fill the gaps. Next slide. And it would also be targeted to certain areas around major transit stops. And we were really addressing the issue of the moderate income housing that we haven't been able to achieve in the past. And so with the affordable housing overlay, it would be targeted to certain areas, for example, around downtown. The difference is that there would be a 50% density bonus above the base FARS. And there would be flexibility to allow micro units with significant common area amenities. Next slide. In addition, one of the programs that are being proposed is the right of first offer to buy land, particularly for, specifically for 100% affordable housing developers. This would be modeled after San Francisco's COPO ordinance. And it really allows nonprofit affordable housing developers to receive an advance notice when land goes on sale for housing development, and allows them to kind of get in there first and submit an offer. Next slide. Program 4A is allowing housing as a permitted use in areas such as the office campus and industrial conservation, which, you know, these areas have typically, or in the past have prohibited housing. There are some properties, a lot of properties in these areas that are ripe for residential development. And so Program 4A would allow housing as a permitted use in these areas. Next slide. Program 4B would provide housing incentives to really encourage housing to occur in areas that have historically not occurred, where housing historically not occurred. Housing may be allowed, but we have not seen housing occur due to, you know, a number of factors, including low-density standards. This would include Main Street, Montana, Ocean Park, as well as the office campus and industrial conservation zones. And you'll see some of the circled areas here show, you know, where we would be targeting housing incentives so that housing could be encouraged in these areas. Next slide. And then with that, Program 4D is the fair housing access to R1 zones. I'm going to hand this over to Ross.
Thanks, Rachel. So yeah, as Rachel mentioned, Program 4D is really geared to the R1 zones. As directed by City Council, staff lifted options to densify areas to historically excluded diverse populations and affordable housing to increase equitable and affordable housing access. As mentioned, these areas are largely the city's R1 neighborhoods, and more specifically, the neighborhoods of North and Montana, which for these purposes include the Northeast Neighbors and Sunset Park, as these neighborhoods, as shown by the table on this slide, have the least amount of diverse housing options as they are largely zoned R1. DAF's approach also proposes to only apply this possible increased densification on parcels of a certain size that could better accommodate more units. So with the support from HRNA and two design firms, DAF analyzed these R1 neighborhoods with the goals and questions in mind of how many units can fit within the existing R1 envelope, accounting for architectural and financial feasibility, and how many units are needed to support at least one inclusionary affordable housing unit on an average 7,500 square foot lot. While more feasibility tests were ran, which were provided to you and the staff core, we wanted to highlight some of the key findings. The first is within the existing R1 envelope, so that includes existing parcel coverage and existing building height limits. It would be unlikely that a multi-unit development would be feasible, and that multi-unit developments would only start to become feasible in the North and Montana neighborhood if three units were permitted and an increase to parcel coverage and/or height was given to accommodate the required unit size. However, even with these increases, only 100% affordable, sorry, 100% market rate development would be feasible. Now, in order to provide at least one affordable unit, the feasibility test resulted in the determination that modified R2 standards would be needed, and that a five-unit development would be needed to would need to be permitted in Noma to support one affordable unit at any affordability level, and six-unit development would be acquired in Sunset Park. The reason for the difference in unit amount is attributed largely to the difference in land cost, condo sale prices, development costs, and average unit size between the neighborhoods. The modified R2 standards would most likely include additional height and possible parcel coverage. Current parking requirements can also sometimes be a challenge. With this information, Program 4D proposes the following. Allow up to three units in R1 zones with minimum lot size requirements. Upzone R1 parcels to R2 in certain crosstown routes. These routes would include seven. These routes would include 7th and 14th Street between Montana Avenue and San Vicente Boulevard, portions of 26th Street, portions of Montana Avenue. As, as I mentioned, these are crosstown routes through the Noma neighborhood, which is similar to streets in Sunset Park, such as 16th Street, 20th, and 28th Street. And a possible alternative for consideration would be to also upzone R1 parcels adjacent to commercial parcels to R2 as well. This includes parcels along Montana Avenue, Pico Boulevard, and a handful along Ocean Park Boulevard, which is also similar to concepts already existing along portions of Pico Boulevard and Ocean Park in the Sunset Park neighborhood. This map shows, this map shows the areas identified for upzoning. The yellow will be the existing R1, with the more orange-brown colors being the parcels for consideration for to be zoned to R2. With that, I'm going to pass it over to, I believe, Jing to go over the RINA compliance for housing production.
Great, thank you. Next slide, Ross. So we'll now go through the programs. There are 14 programs in total that are associated with housing production, and these are all about, you know, trying to support getting to the RINA allocation of 8,895 units, of which 70% are affordable. So you can see here, this is the listing of all of them, and I'm just going to get right to it. So next slide. The first program, 2C, is about revising the Affordable Housing Production Program. We're starting there really to try and simplify that program consideration to establish, instead of the menu option, creating a new singular base. Currently, what we've tested is at a 10%, very low income. There are certainly, we also tested, I think, some different variations of that, you know, in terms of mixed income and the like. So, you know, depending on discussions and what have you, this certainly could be, it could be different either way. The program, I believe the draft housing element just has a typo in it, it says 15%, but it's really meant to be 10 unless there's a different direction. And the reason for revising the HPP is because it does relate to the next program that I'm going to talk about in terms of establishing FARs to support that minimum HPP requirement. And next slide, Ross. So Program 4B is about establishing supportable FARs across the city. So you've seen this before in terms of the approach to the feasibility testing that was done. It's different approach than the past in the sense that we were solving for what is necessary to support the city's minimum inclusionary requirements, and the results being viewed from the perspective of a developer assessing whether to move forward with the housing project. So back in March, we were sort of at step number two in terms of, you know, what's needed to support that. And at this point, we're kind of, you know, between four and five. You know, we have each draft, each draft results, and it's really a conversation around, you know, do we tweak it, do we look at, you know, something different of an approach? Next slide. So the feasibility testing had a series of assumptions that went into it. These assumptions were fully vetted through a transparent process with the technical working group, and it was shared with the commission as well in a draft form, which is, you know, unusual for this work, but we took the step to do that, you know, a variety of midpoint check-ins. Generally speaking, the prototypes assumed a 15,000 square foot parcel, which is a very typical parcel size for housing development in the city. You can see a couple of variations of that. In downtown, we also tested a single lot, because we have seen proposals in that regard, and in Bergamot, given that the parcel sizes, you know, it went, the minimum there was more like a 35,000 square foot lot, again, given that 15,000 is not a typical parcel size in the Bergamot area. A variety of development assumptions were also created with respect to looking at housing projects that have been built. So, you know, it was applied to really, once the FARs were, were solved for, it was a way to then help, you know, convert those to what does that look like in terms of number of units and a number of stories and the like. So, you know, we looked at use mix, floor area distribution in real housing projects, and with the help of architects on the team, came up with a set of development assumptions to apply to the prototypes. And we also assumed the city's unit mix requirement in there, so that's sort of baked into the analysis. Next slide. So you can see that Attachment D, I believe it is, to your staff report, has the listing of the, the results, the draft results of that FAR analysis relative to the inclusionary requirements. I won't run through all of those here, those are in the attachment. But generally speaking, I think it's important to focus on, on the program and the concept, which is, you know, again, what's necessary to support the minimum 10% very low income onsite or 12.5% offsite. 12.5% is because if someone chooses not to do onsite, you know, they're not eligible for state density bonus, which is what we'll talk about in a moment. And the results showed in general that there is a need to increase FARs in all commercial zones across the city except downtown, and those, those supportable FARs exceed existing Tier 2. And then compared to commercial, they are probably approximately double over the existing FAR for commercial, not exactly, but that's roughly the case. And as we discussed on May 12 with you, you know, these are policy choices at this point, you know, given these results, you know, there are choices to potentially lower the minimum HPP if these FARs are, you know, brought up as not as too high or what have you. You know, there are levers that can be moved in terms of that minimum inclusionary requirement, but that's really not aligning with the city's stated goals, you know, to produce affordable units and market rate housing. Another choice, you know, maybe smaller increases in FARs to support slightly lower HPP requirements. So, you know, there are definitely different variations that we can look at in this. As we also discussed before, you know, there's sort of, in terms of the big picture, you know, there's choices between establishing clearly known standards, you know, establishing supportable standards, so there's not some other way to, to obtain, you know, the outcome of a project. Or if the city chooses to establish lesser standards, you know, there's, there's a sort of less predictability in that, because applicants do have, you know, the ability to, to enact provisions in state density bonus law to still increase an envelope to, to make that housing project work if, if they're providing inclusionary housing onsite. Next slide, please. This is kind of an illustrative example at your May 12 meeting. Establish supportable FARs that would support the minimum inclusionary requirement. So it's already at a level that is likely to, likely to incentivize an applicant to proceed with a housing project with state density bonus essentially layers on top of that. So it's not baked into the FARs that you just saw, you know, that came out of that result. It's, it's really in addition to. And this is because as long as the city has an inclusionary requirement, you can see the table there, it's a sliding scale table within state density bonus law that says the city must provide a bonus to applicants who provide that onsite inclusionary unit. So it would apply to that new, newly established FAR, and the inclusionary requirement would apply only to the base project. And in addition to that, applicants can still request incentives and concessions as allowed under, under, under density bonus law. And the proposal in the Housing Element Program is to establish a ministerial menu of incentives and concessions for applicants to select from. Next slide. So you can see the effects of, you know, combined density bonus and incentives and concessions. Though, you know, as you heard me mention, the practical impact of incentives and concessions is that if the city does not establish FARs at levels, you know, that are at the highest density bonus levels, so, you know, 50% translates to 15% VLI. If we set them at 10%, right, then 32 and a half percent is the bonus. But applicants still have the ability to request incentives and concessions, you know, to be able to have, you know, that bonus in, in their project. And you can see considerations in building this system that, you know, it's a sliding scale, it's not just a static bonus, so it's really hard to account, you know, for, for that sliding scale, which is why, you know, the position we're taking is to establish them as likely to proceed with housing to begin with. And so, density bonus is just extra on top of that. And Housing Element Law further directs that we establish those FARs, you know, absent state density bonus. I would note that in bringing this to the council on June the 15th, we will be seeking council's direction on application of state density bonus law prior to an ordinance update. So, you know, we'll be looking for that direction, be able to proceed with requests for that after council's direction. Next slide. Programs 2E and 2F have to do with city sites. 2E is specifically about committing city-owned sites for 100% affordable housing. 2F is about ensuring that city funds continue to support that program. So we went through the analysis of looking at capacity on city-owned sites. There's an estimated yield of 1,884 units on the priority sites that are over one acre. So you can see there that the three priority sites were the fourth and Arizona site, the Bergamot Arts Center, and the Main Street parking lots. And that is really the zoning yield based on about 150 units per acre. This is the typical yield that we've seen in terms of affordable housing projects in other jurisdictions, but within Santa Monica, we, we haven't seen anything like that for 100% affordable in Santa Monica, but it is very typical with respect to just housing projects in general, and, you know, not flipping into a different construction type. The analysis was intended to identify what the gap, funding gap is after free land and typical funding sources, you know, like housing trust fund and tax credit, and the range, sorry, that's a typo there, it's really somewhere between 50 to 250 million on city-owned sites, depending on assumptions that are made about the level of tax credit capture that the city would be eligible for. And again, this is, you know, just an estimate of what we know, and, you know, aware that there are certainly a fluid situation with respect to funding for affordable housing and the discussions that are happening around that, that this was, you know, an assessment that was done at this moment in time. Next slide. Program 4C is with respect to parking lots on religious congregations. So we were able to meet with the Interfaith Council to, to talk about this with religious congregations that, that have these surface parking lots, and, and they do happen to be located largely in a lot of the residential neighborhoods in the city. So it presents kind of a unique opportunity to further equitable access to, to those residential neighborhoods without resulting in displacement of, of existing residents. There seemed to be interest in pursuing affordable housing, you know, seemed to align with, with the mission of most of those congregations, but there's also interest in replacing that parking in some way, and there are state laws, you know, that, that require that, you know, that the city can't require that the parking be replaced, but it seems like there's a desire to do that. And we also heard in our engagement with the, with that group, that there was an interest in, you know, having flexibility to do some market rate housing to support the affordable housing. I think a lot of comments were made that, you know, as a result of a pandemic, they've seen a hit to their finances as well, and, you know, we're, we're interested in exploring the possibility of doing that. So the program does encompass that possibility. Next slide. Program 1G is the ADU Accelerator Program. So this is the incentives that are being provided for accessory dwelling units, and the main idea here is to simplify and streamline the ADU approval process more than it is already. The city is already required by state law to approve these within 60 days. We received a grant to do this work in partnership with other cities. It's, it's being led by SCAG, and the idea here is to seek to create pre-approved plans, user-friendly guidebooks, you know, so it's easy for anybody to understand what the rules are around ADUs, look to streamline city reviews, and also to consider, you know, the fees that, that apply, and if there's anything that can be done about that to make that, that experience, you know, of pursuing an ADU better. Next slide. In addition to that, the program also contemplates a proposal where, you know, allowing one additional unit if the property owner is willing to deed restrict one of the ADUs at an affordable level. Obviously, you know, many, many details to be worked out about this, and, you know, we've started to explore, you know, what are the qualities that might entice a homeowner, you know, to, to want to do that, you know, to deed restrict an additional ADU if there's other incentives that we can, you know, look at to make that palatable. You know, it's something that will be explored as part of that program, and it's a program that also helps achieve fair housing, you know, by providing more affordable rental opportunities within the R1 zoning district. Next slide. Program 1H is adaptive reuse of commercial buildings for housing. So I think as part of the draft concept discussion, we provided quite a bit of background with respect to the conversion of existing buildings. You know, usually you would see this happen with office space and the like, but there's such a shortage of that in, in Santa Monica. You know, it, it could be a challenge to do that. These are not buildings that are necessarily set up for the plumbing and, and what have you that could support a residential use, but this is a program that seeks to explore policy changes, you know, necessary to incentivize the conversion of those spacers and to identify barriers, you know, such as parking requirements, the cost of conversion, adding the infrastructure necessary to do that, any adjustments necessary to technical codes to make that possible, you know, is, is all part of that program. Next slide. Program 1A is something that is kind of in place right now in terms of the streamlined process for co-compliant housing projects. There is the Process Thresholds IZO that is in effect right now, and this program seeks to make that IZO permanent, and this is the administrative approval, so the ministerial process, based on objective standards for 100% affordable housing projects that would include moderate income projects and also housing projects subject to the Housing Accountability Act. I think we received comments that, you know, Tier 3 in downtown should be included in that, and I think we had, that, that is something that can, can be added in, and that was sort of an oversight in there. And finally, next slide. Final set of programs for housing production is really Programs 2G, 5A, and 5B, and they have to do with housing for special needs and persons experiencing homelessness. This is for special needs housing and permanent supportive housing largely. There's also a, a new land use that we're required to add called Low Barrier Navigation Centers, which are essentially something, you know, a step up from a shelter and helping people transition to, to, towards permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is already a permitted use in, in all zones, but we would also be looking to regional cooperation to look at, you know, permanent solutions for this. Solutions for this in addition to temporary shelter as well. Within the city and for special needs housing, it's really a focus on, you know, whether our codes are supporting housing for seniors and persons living with disabilities. In particular, in looking at the assessment of fair housing, it did point out, you know, the limitations with group residential. Although it was meant for a different purpose, it may, you know, be an issue when we're talking about housing for persons with disabilities. And it was, you know, potentially something that we need to look at that was pointed out in that assessment. That is the completion of the programs for housing production, I'm now going to turn it over to Rachel for the suitable sites inventory.
Thanks, Jing. So, Chapter Four of the Housing Element includes the land for housing, which basically is a summary of the Suitable Sites Inventory. Next slide. So the Suitable Sites Inventory is a requirement of the Housing Element, and it basically identifies sites that could potentially accommodate housing. It helps HCD determine whether the city has sufficient adequately zoned sites to accommodate the RENA by the income category. I just want to note that the SSI is not a prediction or the guarantee of the future, nor does, you know. Having a site being listed on the SSI obligate the property owner to develop housing. It's just merely an assessment of the potential housing capacity on that site. So the methodology to compile the SSI follows the guidance in HCD's Housing Element Site Inventory Guidebook. What city staff has done is we've identified objective qualities of properties that have recently developed into housing. Based on past and current trends, and then we apply that to the city's existing land use inventory. Next slide. So just to remind everybody what the methodology was, and that was presented to the commission and to council before, was. That the methodology started with the city's land use inventory, which is basically a comprehensive inventory of all the parcels in the city and their existing uses. We've applied a set of objective filters, filtering things out like, you know. Buildings that are newer, any unique uses, affordable housing, rent-controlled housing and so forth. And then we've categorized those filtered sites accordingly to these kind of ten categories. Actually, it should be twelve, which includes the religious sites as well as. Parking lots associated with residential parking lots associated with commercial uses on the, on the street frontages. Next slide. So after the sites were filtered, city staff individually reviewed all about approximately thirteen hundred parcels with considering to the. With consideration to the following site characteristics. We took a look at the site physical characteristics, such as the size of the site. Whether the site has access to an alley, the shape and its location relative to the urban grid. We also looked at existing uses, whether or not the existing uses show longevity based on staff knowledge, as well as whether or not. Existing uses are multiple tenants versus single tenant sites. Location and context were also important, whether or not the site has access to a variety of residential amenities. Also taking a look to see whether or not other residential projects have occurred nearby. Ownership was also a consideration as well as developer interest. So with all of these site characteristics considered. Sites were given an evaluation of whether or not it had the low, medium, or medium-high and high potential for residential development. The way we categorized these in terms of the potential was, for example, if there was a site. That was a single-tenant site and had access, was, and had access to an alley and encompassed an entire city. Block, or not a city block, but an entire. A large parcel and so forth, was located on the corner, that was classified as a high potential. Whereas a medium-high potential site could be something that had multiple tenants. There wasn't any kind of nearby residential projects that have occurred previously before, so that's how we categorized these sites. Next slide. And so just to remind you all, with HCD's SSI Guidebook, it presented a set of rules of. What we can count in terms of the capacity of these sites. So when we calculated the capacity, we based on a new tier-one FARs, which account for feasibility. Because we know that housing could potentially occur with these new tier-one FARs. There were twenty-five prior sites from the fifth cycle that were identified as high potential. HCD requires that these sites be permitted by right if they include twenty percent inclusionary. And so we do have a program that says that projects would be permitted by right, as Jing mentioned, if they are complying with AJA. And so we also assumed in terms of the capacity, all high potential sites, as I mentioned before. We evaluated sites based on whether or not they have low, medium, high, and medium potential and high potential. So we only looked at the high potential sites for the capacity analysis. And then we assumed the ADU production of six hundred new dwelling units, or sorry, ADU units. I know in the past we had presented a seven hundred number. We've lowered this number to account for the declining production of. Of single-unit parcels over time, as well as the increased possibility that there would be more ADUs occurring in multiple-unit properties. Next slide. And as far as using default density in SSI. Guidebook basically says that if you are zoned with, if you have a zoning of thirty units per acre or more. That particular site is considered a lower, has a capacity for low. And so they use that as a proxy for the lower-income affordability, which we applied in our capacity analysis. So as I mentioned before, most of our, most of our FARs, sorry, all of the FARs that we applied. In the capacity analysis are the new tier-one FARs, which result in approximately a hundred and ten units per acre. Next slide. And so as the summary of the total land capacity in the SSI is approximately eleven thousand units. Which accounts for a twenty-four percent buffer. Next. Next, sorry. So for category one, which is the approved and pending projects, we've received some comments that perhaps we shouldn't be accounting for all of the units. That are approved and in the pipeline since not all will occur. So we looked back at all of the housing projects that have been approved. Or pending in the last fifth cycle Housing Element, and we found that ten percent of projects have. Not occurred or they were withdrawn for whatever reason, so we applied a ten percent discount factor to category one. Next, we looked at the category for the city-owned sites. And so based on HRNA's analysis, as we mentioned, we applied the density of a hundred and fifty units per acre. Which accounts for constraints such as commercial uses and any kind of revenue generating uses as necessary. Next. And then for the category twelve parking lots, these are the parking lots in residential zones that are associated with commercial uses on the. Commercial fronting boulevards, and these are, we assume the removal of the density caps. Because the Housing Element does propose a program to remove density caps of these parking lots in residential zones. And then applying the six hundred ADU projection that previously mentioned, we have a total capacity of eleven thousand units. So that gives us a buffer of about twenty-four percent. Next slide. Oh yes, and sorry, as I mentioned before, with all remaining categories, we based it on a new tier-one standards. Next slide. We also modeled alternative scenarios in looking at SSI, in the SSI. We modeled existing tier-one FARs. And when we looked at our SSI and used existing tier-one FARs just to see where it got us. We were below the RENA allocation, there was approximately five thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine units. So this, these FARs, I mean, this capacity analysis doesn't count for the fact that a lot of the FARs cannot support. Housing projects with the city's existing minimum AHPP requirements, for example, in the MUBL. We also modeled existing tier-two FARs. While that can meet the RENA, it might not be potentially, it might not be compliant with the Housing Element. Law because tier-two is voluntary and requires community benefits, so HCD may view that as. Not being, as us not being able to use that as the basis of the SSI capacity calculations. And furthermore, it doesn't account for the HRA analysis of housing feasibility. Next slide. And in the Housing Element, we also provided a quantitative objective, which is required by Housing Element Law. That quantified objective recognizes that maybe non-governmental constraints on housing production. And while we can ask for a quantitative, quantified objective. It is not something that is actually used to measure progress, and so, you know, it is, it's a number that's put out there to. To basically say that, you know, we anticipate this quantified objective is what could be achievable, but the progress. And progress of the Housing Element is measured by the RENA, not by the quantitative objective or quantified objective. So the quantified objective that we provided is about five thousand two hundred and fifty-three units. This assumes development as planned for, within the existing LEUS, the Downtown Community Plan and the prior fifth cycle Housing Element. So we, this table basically breaks down how we got to the quantified objective. Next slide. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve, who will talk about the housing stability programs in the Housing Element.
Great, thanks, Rachel. So this next section is on housing stability that consists of. Preservation programs that focus on rehabilitation and maintaining and extending the use and livability of our aging residential buildings. Next slide. And also housing assistance programs and services that focus on providing financial and technical support. To our seniors, families, persons with disabilities, and others with special needs. And this is basically an efforts to help our residents retain their housing in the city. Next slide. So the last time we spoke, we talked about housing barriers and the needs of existing residents as highlighted through the technical working groups. Which include the need for rental assistance and support for those who are rent burdened. Continued tenant protection and assistance ranging from legal counsel. Oversight of landlord obligations related to voucher programs and housing maintenance and repairs. And also assistance on tenant rights and available housing programs. Continued support services for the homeless and at-risk individuals. And also the need to preserve housing affordability by maintaining and rehabbing our existing housing stock. Next slide. So based on the feedback, the draft element includes new and revised policies and programs to achieve the stability-related goals. Which are goals number three, five, six, and seven, as shown on this slide, and then also as described earlier in the presentation. So in this section, I'll be highlighting just the new and the expanded implementing programs. Next slide. Starting with goal number three, which seeks to preserve the existing housing supply and to prevent the displacement of existing residents. Listed are the programs here under goal three. Program three A is to restrict the removal of existing rental housing. To ensure that protected units are replaced, and this would be consistent with SB three thirty. The program would adopt a new local version of the state law with tenant protections on a permanent basis through the housing cycle. Since we know that SB three thirty sunsets in twenty twenty-five. Program three C is an updated program that includes the conservation of both restricted and non-restricted at-risk housing units. Which the program would also explore strategies to conserve rent-controlled, as well as naturally occurring affordable units that are also at risk of removal. For redevelopment. Program three H is a new program that would provide additional outreach to landlords on available city programs. And also encourage continued rehab, repairs, and upgrades to the housing units. Next slide. Moving on to goal five is to provide housing for persons experiencing homelessness. The city will continue to invest in housing and supportive services to prevent. And address the impacts of homelessness as provided in program five A. And five B is a new program in response to AB one oh one that Jing had mentioned prior to. Which requires a by-right low-barrier navigation center. And which is essentially a service-enriched homeless shelter that provides temporary living facilities as well as case management. So this change would occur during the updates to the zoning ordinance. Moving on to goal six. Goal six seeks to provide housing assistance and supportive programs to low-income households. And households with special needs, families, seniors, and the homeless. Program six B seeks funding sources to support rental assistance for vulnerable individuals and households at risk of displacement. And this is to ensure that the city is always monitoring the availability of funding sources on an ongoing basis, in which we currently do as well. Program six C is to maintain and expand the POD program by pursuing additional funding to further expand assistance. To other rent-burdened residents. And program six D is also a new program that addresses the resident concerns where the city would provide. Additional outreach and coordination to raise tenant and landlord awareness of available housing programs and resources. And finally, moving on to goal number seven, next slide, which is to eliminate housing discrimination, as we've went through before. Program seven C is the Right to Counsel program, which is a two-year pilot program. That will provide legal assistance for low-income residents facing eviction. So that concludes this section, and Jing will close by providing the focus of the commission's discussion.
Great, next slide, Ross. So this brings us to the conclusion of the presentation, and really just bringing us back to the beginning. Kind of an overview of everything we've covered, which is the goals and policies, all of the programs. Under housing production, equitable housing accessibility. And then finally, Ross, if you can end with that final slide. Which is, you know, some key questions that you could use to guide your discussion. So with that, we'll stop talking and happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Jing. Before we go to questions, I may not be the only person here who. Would love to have a quick walkthrough on those additional attachments, but if I am the only person here, then I won't ask for that. Is there anybody who would like to hear a rundown for the public and for us on attachments B, C, or D? Nope. Okay, well, with that, let us go to questions. What we're gonna do, yep.
Can I make a suggestion? I don't know how many people are in the queue, but given how long.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it the way I made sure that everybody knows. So please, I, we went through this before you joined us, so. So here's what we're gonna do. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through the, I want to ask if there are any unresolved clarifying questions. That need to be asked before we hear from the public. We will go back for substantive questions later, where again, as I said before. Before Jing began her presentation, these are really only the questions that you feel strongly that need answering before we hear from the public. Because we have sixteen people waiting to speak, and we want to hear from them before we get into substantive questions tonight. So I'll just go down, let's just start with Commissioner Fonda Benardi, if you have any clarifying questions.
Not none, but I have a point of information. Is that deck that we just saw going to be available to the public after this meeting?
It is available now. I should know that the deck has been posted to the website, it is now available on the website. Under staff presentation, it has also been emailed to the full commission.
Great, thank you.
So, yeah, if you want, download it, and that way it'll make questions easier to pose. Commissioner Fresco? No, okay, Commissioner Lambert?
I have clarifying questions, but they're all substantive, so I'm gonna wait.
Okay, Commissioner Pastor?
My only clarifying question is what is exactly is going to the commission on June fifteenth with regards to the ordinance update?
Sorry, you were like cutting in and out, I think something about June fifteenth, sorry.
Yeah, can you please clarify what exactly is going to the council on June fifteenth with regard to an ordinance update? Density bonus ordinance update?
No, yeah, so it's not an ordinance update, I think that maybe just misspoke there. Where we're going to council asking for direction with respect to density bonus. I think what we're saying is that once we get direction from council, we will be able to proceed with direction before we do an ordinance update in the fall.
Ah, that makes sense, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Raskin?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, and Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, just one, on the overlay.
On the overlay, affordable overlay throughout the city. We keep talking about it being over the city and filling in gaps was the word tonight. But it can't be applied to an R1, the R1 zoning. Is that, is that my underst, is that correct? I just, it's not been 100% clear to me.
So currently, the areas of the bubbles, if you will, that, that go into the R1 are not applied because multi-unit is not a permitted use in the R1 as part of the program that's being proposed. It would be to add, you know, affordable, 100% affordable as a permitted use in the R1. So it would, it would allow that overlay to be enacted. That, that's what is being proposed. But currently, you're right, no, it does not apply.
Okay, well, that's a really important.
Jim, you cut out, okay. Okay. I actually have two, I have two clarifying questions, just for my understanding. One, or I'll, you know what, I'll just boil it down to one. I am looking at the attachment that's called the R1 Development Standards Analysis. And I would like to understand, because in the staff presentation, you indicated that there was no R1 in Wilmont, and yet the two feasibility implication studies were run on Wilmont and Sunset Park. So I was just wondering if, if you could explain how we reconcile those two pieces of information?
Yeah, so, so sorry, the, I think we just mislabeled. It's not, it's really north of Montana is the analysis. So it's not Wilmont, which is obviously all multi-unit zone, so.
So these are for. If it's, okay.
The analysis is for north of Montana, so it's just not labeled right in the.
If, if anybody is looking at a document that says Wilmont on it with respect to R1, because it says Wilmont and Sunset Park throughout, that is really confusing, okay?
All right, understood.
Okay, all right, with that, let's go, let's go to public comment. And as a reminder, because we have more than seven people lined up for public comment, the time limit will be two minutes per person.
Okay, our next caller is Paula Larmour. Welcome to the meeting, Larmour. You have two minutes, your time begins now.
Hi, Paula Larmour with Harding Larmour, Kitchering, Coswell. Our firm submitted two communications to you. One was on behalf of the Santa Monica Housing Council, expressing concerns with the legal adequacy of the draft housing element, and I'm happy to address any questions about that communication. The second was a list of specific recommendations to the programs in the draft housing element, coming from the perspective of working on many housing projects in the city and seeing the current constraints on housing production. Overall, a key concern is that the draft housing element lacks the specificity needed to dramatically boost housing production at the level mandated by the RENA members. A few priorities I wanted to highlight are implementing the state density bonus law in the mixed-use commercial districts. This is program two D. Specifically, we request that the language in two D states that the density bonus shall be applied to the residential floor area to provide some further detail, that the menu of ministerial incentives and concessions includes ground floor height, active commercial design standards, height, unit mix, and other standards that have either proven to be problematic for housing projects or are needed to achieve the density bonus. Also ask that the draft housing element include a commitment to processing the pending applications and directing the city to adopt procedures and timelines for processing density bonus applications. Program one S regarding the DCP should be implemented now, not wait until June 2023. There's no reason to delay this, as we've seen that the newly adopted 20% to 30% standards have limited housing production in the downtown. With respect to the streamlining program, it needs to apply to all housing projects, even if a modification or waiver is required. Given the numerous standards in the code, many housing projects need modifications or waivers. So if the streamlining only applies to those that don't require it, you're missing a significant number of housing projects.
Sorry, your time is up.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert, go ahead. Don't hang up, Paula.
Okay, Paula, Paula, are you there?
Yes.
I have two questions. One, did you find anywhere in the housing element that maybe I missed that tier three was addressed from the standpoint of density bonus or AHPP reanalysis?
No.
It's not there. And then in your opinion, based on your experience with housing development, do you think that it works to have an increased FAR for a density bonus or whatever we're going for without a height increase?
It depends on the district, but in most cases, the density, the, the current heights and standards are, you know, fit together. And if you add FAR, if you, you know, do the 35% or 50%, you're gonna need at least one extra story to accommodate the density bonus.
How much you consider underground housing?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If you have no other questions, we'll move on. And while we're waiting for the next caller, I just want to remind everyone, we do have a translator available tonight. If you require translation, please let staff know.
Our next caller is Paras Maniar. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to speak. Your time starts now.
Thank you. My family's been a resident of Santa Monica since 2005, and we currently live on 26th Street. I spent the past few days reading the draft housing element, and I appreciate the effort, and I think there's many elements of the draft that are worth considering, but I strongly oppose the proposal to change single-family resident R1 zoning on 26th Street to R2. I think we can all appreciate living in Santa Monica, single-family ownership, and it's central to our communities. The front yards and the backyards on which our children play that extend and allow various residents to get together. But we already have a limited supply of R1, and in reducing that supply, we're only gonna drive up the price of the remaining R1 lots, making them further inaccessible. And under the auspices of 100% market rate, as Ross laid out, a unit like mine, which is a classic Santa Monica college, 1,700 square feet, three bedrooms, two baths, something like that would be redeveloped into three 2,000-plus square-foot townhouses, each one being worth more than my current property, based on current market dynamics that we see around. Finally, if you really look at it, I don't think the research has been put in to see if this is even practical. If you look at a large slot of 26th Street north of Montana, there is no alley access on any of it. So therefore, if you were to convert those and over time they were to redevelop, it would only add to the traffic congestion. The multi-units only work where there is alley access to kind of come in and out of those spaces on an already busy thoroughfare. And so, you know, what I really would like people to understand is I encourage the commission to really review this carefully. I would say strike it or send it back to be looked at in depth. It's, this is not a selfish ask. I fully understand that if my R1 lot was rezoned to R2, it would, what I have would frankly be a windfall. Some sharkist developer would come along and offer me an all-cash offer that would be hard or financially imprudent to say no to. But when I really look at this and I think about the Santa Monica I live in, the one I've been in for a while, the one.
Good time, good time is up, thank you very much.
Graciously ask for 10 seconds to close out. I would just say that what we're just doing with this is we're simply not, we're just moving on and getting more.
Good time is up, thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. Thank you very much.
Our next caller is Mark Verbier. Welcome to the meeting, Mark. You have two minutes to speak. Your time starts now.
Good evening, Mark Verville, resident. I'm calling in opposition to this draft housing element. My concerns are as follows. There is, one, there is no analysis or data concerning the amount of RENA requirements can be satisfied by the existing loose. Specifically, the housing element has failed to quantify the baseline loose capacity, quantify the minimum changes required to meet RENA and AFFH requirements, clearly state the discretionary changes being proposed, and/or follow the community consultative process that initially established the loose. Number two, the program number four that upzones R1 does not support any of the stated objectives and should be removed. While this program assumes that densification drives affordability, the city has acknowledged that it will actually increase land costs. Santa Monica's density today places it within the top 9% of California cities with populations over 50,000. If densification had any relation to affordability, Santa Monica would be more affordable than 90% of California cities instead of being one of the costiest cities in the country. Three, the Affordable Housing Overlay proposal is unsupported. There is no analysis as to the likely parking limited AHO's compatibility with deeply residential areas. Indiscriminate AHO implementation will produce housing with limited access to amenities due to lack of viable transit. Having a low-transit network value bus service alone is an insufficient primary transit alternative, except in a very small number of specific use cases. In contrast, every area in Cambridge's 6.4 square miles is a short walk to a legacy subway station, trolley, or bus stop, significantly contributing to their AHO viability. Excessive cost of retrofitting fully-integrated transit systems into legacy road-reliant networked urban environments will ensure that the scenario never materializes in Santa Monica. The metro line costs between an estimated $100 to $166 million per mile. There has been no substantive consultation with the community. In Cambridge, 20 public meetings were held, 52 zoning amendments proposed, and 46 adopted. This resulted, for example.
Thank you, your time is now up.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next caller?
Yes, our next caller is Dee Mel. Welcome to the meeting, Dee. You have two minutes to speak. Your time starts now.
Thank you very much. I'm not gonna be able to talk as sophisticatedly as the others did, but I want to say I oppose the changing of R1 to R2 zoning. It just doesn't make sense that a couple of years ago, Building and Safety took down R1 zoning ability to build and opposed mini-mansions to be built in R1. And now by you allowing or wanting, wanting to build multifamily housings on, on an R2 next to an R1 house, you're basically doing exactly, undoing what they voted for. So this doesn't make sense that two commissions or two committees are not, are just working against each other. The other thing is, I, I really didn't understand everything that you guys read from your report. It's too hard for regular people like me to understand and absorb. There was no talk about how you're gonna bring in enough water, electricity. How are you, how are we gonna afford the social services that is needed to keep a city this densely populated going, going on and on? There's so many things that we're so taken with this idea of affordable housing and bringing in more people. We forget there are all these people who've lived here for many, many, many years. Those are the ones who built the city of Santa Monica, and they're being forgotten in, in the wishing of some people for economic equity and for equitable housing access for everyone. So opposed to what you're doing. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see questions, and as a point of information, I would just let the public know that the anti-mansionization efforts to which the caller referred were actually processed by this commission as well. So it's one commission doing all of the land use work. And it's, let's go on to the next caller.
Our next caller is Amy Anderson. Welcome to the meeting, Amy. You have two minutes to speak. Your time starts now.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners, Amy Anderson, Santa Monica resident. I actually wanted to congratulate you on a great draft housing element. I think you've done a great job of including some really strong and innovative policies that will help the city to both meet its regulatory obligations and to ideally produce more housing and particularly affordable housing. In particular, I'd highlight the following is really strong policies that I'm supportive of. The ministerial approval process for housing projects, the Affordable Housing Overlay, the changes to the density bonus implementation, the housing development on city land, elimination of parking minimums, very important, changes to the DCP development standards, expanding residential as a buy right in new zones. And I would support the 15% inclusionary. I was a little disappointed to hear Jing say that that was actually supposed to be 10%. I just really encourage you to look at the language in the document to try and make the programs much more specific and the policies stronger. I sent a email earlier this evening, want to highlight just a couple of specific solutions until I get stopped. It would be great to make sure that the density, FAR, and development standards make 15% inclusionary feasible on the ministerial approval process, making sure that projects at 120% AMI would be considered affordable. Paula Larmour highlighted that needing to include projects that are requesting a minor variance and modification, those should be allowed to use that ministerial approval process. I'd extend the Affordable Housing Overlay for that higher income, the 120% AMI to the mixed-use boulevard zones in addition to the transit areas.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Your time is up now.
Are there any questions? I, I have a question, so, but if anyone else has a question. Okay, so, thank you, former planning commissioner Anderson. I, your email came in after the deadline, so it's not in the packet. I have a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind. You, how would you, in terms of the streamlined approvals and recommending targeting households at 120 AMI, how would you see that interacting with, with Prop R that focuses us on 100% affordable and 120%?
I guess, I don't know, I don't know about the alignment with Prop R, but I do know that the city needs a range of affordability levels and that it needs more housing generally because of the housing, you know, supply shortage. So that that would be a way to, to produce more units that are gonna be, you know, I mean, I think it's, it's important to highlight that 120% AMI is gonna serve folks like our kids who've moved back to town and our teachers, right, and our baristas and our grocery clerk. So I don't, I can't answer the question about alignment with Prop R. I just know that trying to include a variety of affordable levels, affordability levels is gonna be helpful to, you know, creating housing opportunities and also reducing, you know, traffic and greenhouse gases.
Got it. Are you aware of other cities besides San Diego that have, or do you know if San Diego has seen an impact of its ADU accelerator, the changes that you referred to in your email? Just has that actually resulted in more ADUs, more deed-restricted ADUs?
Yeah, so they just, I think it just started to be implemented at the beginning of this year, and my understanding is that there's about 100 units that are being proposed. So, you know, assuming those are, you know, five-unit proposals, that's a, that's quite a number of projects, actually.
That, that is, okay, great, thank you very much. Oh, Commissioner Lambert? Don't hang up, Amy.
Hi, Amy. Have you, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you know, and if you don't, probably Jim or Alicia does, whether the City Labor Office developed the option of using the state density bonus law or the TOC option? They don't do that, Jim?
I, I think Jim is better equipped, but I think the TOC refers to the density bonus law.
I thought it was one or the other.
It is one or the other.
Okay. That was my question, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Keep going.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Hank Coning. Welcome to the meeting, Hank. You have two minutes to speak. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I wish you a good evening, and I want to thank the staff for an excellent presentation despite a couple of tobos. I did send you a letter expressing some areas of concern in the city's zoning ordinance and in the city's building code amendments that will require addressing if the objectives of the housing element as presented would be realized. I'm not asking you to address these tonight, of course, but rather urge you to simply note in any action that you make tonight, or tomorrow night, that these items need to be looked at in the near future so that much-needed housing production can be achieved and the city then complies with the housing laws. I'm going to leave it at that. I'm happy to ask any questions that you may have about that, about those issues. Thank you.
I do, but we'll go with Commissioner Lambert first. Yeah, Commissioner Lambert, you were muted. Now you're muted, so unmute.
You're very lucky. In the HIRNA John Kowalski analysis, they posed two scenarios for condo development in north of Montana and Sunset Park. The north of Montana scenario had construction costs at $550 per square foot, and the Sunset Park had $450 per square foot. I don't live in a Home Depot toolhouse, so I'm not really sure why they lowered that number other than somehow the quality of materials needed to be better in north of Montana. Have you ever thought about that?
I can only assume that they think people are going to build more expensively and have sub-zero refrigerators and Viking stoves in north of Montana and maybe not have those in Sunset Park. I don't know why. If you're building the same quality construction, it's going to be the same cost in Santa Monica, wherever you are.
Maybe they just had a block of ice for Sunset Park. But basically, your experience is that whether you build a condo in north of Montana or one in Sunset Park, the per square foot construction cost is--
It's going to be the same, for the same quality, of course. I mean, you can build more expensive or less expensive, but I would have thought that'd be the same in both areas of the city.
Thanks a lot.
So Hank, don't leave us. I have a question. I'd like to, you wrote to us about the parking issues on the lots that are, I hesitate to use the word "A lot" because that's a technical term. We're talking about the lots that are adjacent to commercial that are next to residential. I've had some fruitful conversations, and I want to know your thoughts about this. Let's assume for a moment that we could, that if, you know, if AD 1401 does away with parking requirements, we're good to go, but let's assume for a moment that the city takes the actions that you and others have recommended in terms of simplifying parking replacement on those sites. What types of, I've seen some proposals for things that look a little bit like Muse in An architect named Rick Abramson was talking about this idea of laneways. Do you think that there are vital opportunities to produce meaningful housing on those parking lots on the border of, you know, sort of Montana and into the R1 or on the borders of, like, on our boulevards as a buffer between commercial and single-family residential?
Or commercial and multifamily residential.
Or commercial and multifamily, that's right. Yes, that's exactly right.
There are many sites that I see around town that I go, this should be a housing project. If I was living in that apartment next door, would I rather be looking at this parking lot with people coming and going all the time throughout the day and night, no trees, nothing? Or could it be beautifully designed housing? I'd rather have the housing, thank you very much. We've heard many, what else? On the planning commission, there are many discussions about city parking lots. One was for a restaurant, and they said lots of people doing all sorts of nefarious things late at night in the parking lot, tuck, 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 and like, okay, build housing. So I think we need to facilitate that. We could get a lot of housing built, and it would be beautiful, and it would be responsive to the context.
And do you think it would provide for additional urban canopy, tree canopy opportunities?
Well, I think so. I mean, I think one of the great things that was done in the loose was this whole idea of the daylight plane, the protected adjacent uses. And so as long as we abide by that, I mean, that's the one thing, don't touch the daylight plane, because that works. It's all about sun and, you know, solar access and views and seeing the blue sky. So there are a lot of other, and I mentioned standards that are problematic, like, you know, how you access that, where you put replacement commercial parking. I looked at one that had, you know, existing commercial building, so it needs the parking. It could not be under the existing building, so one, who cares if it's under the residential zone portion, if it's underground? Who sees it? If the access to the commercial is from the street and not the alley, the residents who live next to the alley love it? Well, take your resi parking in there at the same time to avoid more curb cuts, more traffic in the alley. These things become impediments to using those sites for housing.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Being done, we will move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Kelly Simon. Welcome to the meeting, Kelly. You have two minutes to speak. Your time starts now.
Hello, thank you, Commission members and other folks who have spoken already. I am a homeowner on, I live on 26th Street for over 20 years now, raised my kids in this house, and I am new to this situation here. I also cannot speak as eloquently because I don't know all about SSIs and SARs and all the things that were presented. I had a little trouble seeing the slides. They were a little difficult to read, and I couldn't get my closed captioning to work, so I missed some of it, but, I mean, the bottom line is, I oppose changing my R1 of my home to R2. And I don't understand when things like, we live on 26th Street, obviously, 20 years now. We wanted to make our driveway safer so we wouldn't have to back out on the 26th, and we were denied an additional curb cut to get a circular driveway like our neighbors. So we ended up, you know, creating an alternative situation. But I don't understand how folks can be considering putting four units, for example, on my property with no additional parking provided, and, you know, it's already, obviously, busy street. Also, I've got to say, I feel picked on living on 26th Street. I don't understand why this is not being considered for, say, 25th Street or Georgina. I mean, I don't understand why, as a resident of 26th Street, somebody decides, you know, that this change should be made for my R1 home that we bought over 20 years ago. So I, like I said, I'm new to this. I'll definitely be tuning in, and I'll be reading as much as I can. I just heard about it late last night, and I appreciate the folks who have alerted me to this situation, and I don't know, I've also heard that sometimes these things have already--
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Your time is now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, we'll move on.
Our next caller is John. Welcome to the meeting, John. You have two minutes to speak. Your time starts now.
A couple quick, thank you for the presentation. Hopefully you guys can hear me. This, I strongly oppose any changes to the zoning in Santa Monica. I strongly oppose upzoning R1 residential lots. This is a very misguided proposal. This is essentially stealing the character and the charm of our city and creating a dense Santa Monica that none of us can imagine right now because we love Santa Monica as it is right now. We have all chosen to live here. Couple quick things. This 9,000 number, affordable housing element number proposed by SCAG was not contested by you guys. It should have been contested by you guys in the city council and brought down, much like Huntington Beach does. You can actually protest to bring this down to around 3,000 units, and that would suffice for the next 10 years. Number two, you are not factoring how undesirable extra traffic, noise, density, construction will be in Santa Monica. Number three, schools, infrastructure, classroom sizes, all will be crowded and would make the quality of our schools go down. When the quality goes down, people move out. This is extremely advantageous to developers and unions who are eager to get onto R1 properties to upzone. This is a very shameful and deliberate attempt by pro-developer members of council to do this. Keep in mind, homeowners are the anchors to these neighborhoods that you are trying to destroy and change. They invested their life savings, they invested their retirement fund, they maintain, upgrade their home, they're responsible for--
Thank you, John. Your time is now up.
Zena, you have two minutes to speak. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Thank you to the staff for the PowerPoint. Speaking only for myself, I oppose the residential upzoning recommendations in the draft housing element. I also oppose having affordable units generated through inclusionary housing. With 6,000 affordable units required, it would require planning for more than 30,000 market rate units, which is obviously unsustainable here. City of Santa Monica exceeded one of its recent SCAG allocations by 236%. So I don't understand why the city didn't challenge the 9,000 allocation this time. It's an unfunded mandate by the state, so why pretend that we can afford to meet it? Regarding relieving disparities due to past segregation and regarding the assumption that densification will create more diversity in Santa Monica, here is some data. Density by neighborhood. Number one, Wilshire, Montana, number six in diversity. Number two in density, Ocean Park, number three in diversity. Number five in density, Pico Neighborhood, but number one in diversity. Number seven in density, Sunset Park, and yet number two in diversity. If you look at it the other way, Pico Neighborhood is number one in diversity but five in density, but they're not getting an overlay. Sunset Park is number two in diversity but number seven in density. Ocean Park is number three in diversity, number two in density. Womont is number six in diversity, number one in density. So since Sunset Park is apparently more diverse than Ocean Park, it seems illogical that 100% overlay would be applied to Sunset Park but not Ocean Park. I have a lot more to say, but that's it for now. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Ms. Josephs? I have a question. In your letter to us, you suggested that the unit of comparison for diversity for Santa Monica was to the nation, and I was wondering if you could explain why you chose to compare Santa Monica's diversity with American diversity, like states like North and South Dakota, as opposed to, say, LA County's diversity or California's diversity?
It was only a general statement of nationwide diversity compared to Santa Monica, and it was just interesting to me that it was similar. I wasn't talking about North or South Dakota or Carolina or any other state or county.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Next caller?
The next caller is Tricia Crane. Welcome to the meeting, Tricia. You have two minutes to speak. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening, Tricia Crane, Sheriff of Northeast Neighbors, speaking for our board. The state is requiring something new of cities in this cycle, that the housing element also affirmatively advanced fair housing. It is this requirement to affirmatively advance fair housing that has resulted in the proposed upzoning of neighborhoods in the draft housing element. This is the reason for the proposed overlays of four-story housing projects in single-family neighborhoods and increased development standards on three streets running through our neighborhoods. An alternative approach can and should be explored. Submit the loose to HCD together with the more recent housing production program of ADUs. The community spent years working with the city staff to produce the loose. This is why the loose served as a solid starting point for city planners in the construction of this draft housing element. Together with the report on the recent ADU housing production and the expectation that ADU build-out will meet housing production needs as an authentic effort to affirmatively advance fair housing, the loose can and should be submitted to HCD by the July deadline. Our residents deserve to be respected, and this approach can work. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Crane? Okay, thank you very much. We have the next caller.
I believe that's the last caller, but there's somebody in the attendee section that was listed as a request. I'm trying to find out if he wants to speak. But I haven't gotten response yet, so--
All right, so if, well, here, let's do this. I'll just say this out loud. I want to make sure that, is there anyone who was expecting to give public comment who has not given public comment, who was registered in time? If you're listening, if you're in the attendee area and you believe that you're in the queue to give public comment, please use the moderator chat to communicate. Have we heard from that person? No? Okay.
Somebody else. Okay, oh, somebody else. Ari Spock wants to see if he could speak again, John.
Oh, no. We're one, okay, so we're good. All right. Terrific. So they're sticking around to listen. That's great. Okay, it is now 7:37. Let me suggest that we take an eight-minute break until 7:45, and we will return at 7:45 and start with Commissioner questions. So Commissioner Fonda Benardi will be first, and I want to remind everyone, as you're getting your questions ready, we're going to go, what we're going to do for clarity and for staffing, you know, so that the staff can follow us, is we're going to go chapter by chapter. So for our questions, in order to, in order to really get through this, so we'll start with Chapter 1. So pull up your housing element. We'll start with Chapter 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, we'll go around. If you don't have a question on a particular chapter, there's no need to ask a question, and then we'll go through those attachments at the end as well, and I know that the consultants are here to answer our questions about those attachments. So we'll see you at 7:45.
That's not how I organize my questions.
Look, you guys, isn't that beautiful?
What do you got to share there?
It's a mole burrito. Isn't that incredible? There's plenty to share, actually. Now I have to eat without getting it all over my papers.
That's our incentive to get back in person, right? Nina's baking?
I promise to bake. I promise. I won't let you down.
All right.
Okay. Nina, I'm a baker, too. We're gonna have a bake-off.
Oh, have fun.
We have staff back. Are we ready to jump in? Okay, so in the interest of, in the interest of trying to keep track of our recommendations and our questions and all of those things, and so everybody can follow along, please bear with me. We are going to start, if you look at Page Five, as we indicated, we're going to go kind of chapter by chapter in this report, and then we'll circle back and make sure that everyone's questions will get answered. I promise here. Are there any questions about or corrections? I know that Commissioner Fresco had some suggested changes that were posted. Let's start with Commissioner Fonda Benardi with Chapter One of the housing elements. Do you have any questions? We are talking about Chapter One, which runs from Page Six to- to Chapter Two, actually, so. No question? Commissioner Fonda Benardi? No. No questions? You're muted, so I can't tell if you have questions.
No, no questions on Chapter One.
Okay. Anyone? Commissioner Fresco, Chapter One?
Well, I have kind of a general question, which involves its introduction, so, which is just in general, if we adopt of a city a compliant housing element that resembles this one, but then there's so much opposition to some of the zoning changes that would be required to implement it, that we have trouble getting those adopted. What happens then?
So, you know, the draft housing element before you represents really staff's best recommendation, based on our reading of all requirements, you know, but I think what we have to recognize is a lot of this law, these requirements are new. HCD is also reviewing it, implementing them across cities for the first time. We're working with our housing element consultants to try and understand how it's being viewed in other regions that are, you know, five to six months ahead of us, like San Diego and the Sacramento region. So, you know, this is representing our best foot forward on it, but certainly, you know, there are options to get to different things. So, you know, that's the purpose of this public hearing process, right, is for the commission to discuss it and come to a recommendation, and ultimately, you know, council will be providing kind of the final word on that in terms of what gets transmitted to HCD. And, you know, then we will be, we will receive comments back from HCD in terms of, you know, whether they think this is eating the mark, in terms of a compliant housing element.
Thank you, but that wasn't actually what I asked.
No.
What I asked is if we adopt, if the city adopts a compliant housing element and HCD loves it and we're all done, but then the next steps in implementation are to make substantial zoning changes, then what happens?
I see what you mean. Yeah. So at that point, if, so, if the city adopts a compliant housing element, HCD certifies it, the city is committed to following through on the programs in the housing element, you know, so if the city didn't, we would be out of compliance, and there are, you know, judicial remedies that HCD could take. There are a variety of impacts with what happens if falls out of compliance, in terms of the housing.
So basically, we're in big trouble all over again.
There's could be issues, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That was, oh, and also just for everybody else, some of the notes I submitted, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at them, they were just basically factual and tweaking of historical references that, just based on my very Santa Monica-specific research versus some of the more general regional information that what was in there was based on. So if anybody has any issues with what I submitted, then let me know. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On items 1F and where's the other one, AHPP? Are you also going to be looking at AHPP to build these Tier Three projects downtown?
Yeah, this is about the ECP development standards.
Right.
Yeah, so it would involve review of all of the standards, including Tier Two, Tier Three relative to, so I think it would, you know, we would look at the whole system with respect to, you know, relationship between HP requirements and FAR.
And there would also be a density bonus look at Tier Three, right?
Well, I think that, you know, at this point, we haven't, you know, concluded as to the effects of the tiers in downtown because the results are different in downtown relative to the rest of the city, you know, so we don't have specifics with respect to that other than we, you know, we have to look holistically at the program. But in terms of a concept, density bonus would apply to the Tier One base.
Well, I guess we disagree about that. On 2B, about the first right of refusal for nonprofits, is that for basically vacant land and existing buildings?
Yeah, it's for, it's for properties that go for sale, so we're not specific to what's on it. That's the concept anyways. Again, another one where more work to be done on that.
And you really meant to say that in the case of the affordable housing overlay district, there would be no limit on height or density, correct? That was your intent?
That's right.
Oh, then, when you talk about allowing housing or incentivizing housing in areas such as the office campus, whatever it's called, the industrial zone, is there also going to be analysis of the effect of doing that on a tax base of the city?
Of the, sorry.
We're basically going to incentivize housing all over the city versus commercial development. So if we're looking at, as we suggest in Chapter One, at the office campus and the industrial, whatever that zone is called, well, housing's not allowed now, but would be, what about the impact on the fiscal health of the city?
Well, I think that, yes, of course. I mean, I think that when, you know, this is the housing element, so of course the focus is on housing, but as you heard me indicate in the beginning of the presentation, you know, this is not an abandonment of the strategies involved in the LOSE, you know, which is very much about a balance of land uses and there are, you know, certainly, you know, from an economic sustainability perspective, we want to make sure that we have a healthy economic base to, you know, support the city as well. You know, have we run numbers in terms of estimated tax rate, you know, that sort of thing? No, you know, at this point, we have not. You know, from a policy perspective, you know, commercial development would still be allowed. There's not, you know, a prohibition on that that is being proposed. This is, you know, really about trying to, you know, implement what's required under housing element law to incentivize housing.
And we also want to respect the five-footed foot distance from the freeway that we've been talking about, basically, to approve as a council?
Well, that's kind of a detail that I think, you know, is to be discussed later, so obviously it can be discussed if that's what, you know, people want to do.
And then in 6G, you talk about a temporary relocation program, which state立法that could also assist the homeless, I suppose. Do we have a project room key program in Santa Monica? I'm not sure what temporary relocation means for the city's involvement.
Well, the temporary relocation program there has to do with really tenants that are temporary displaced because of repairs or whatnot to their unit. So that's not the same as housing for persons experiencing homelessness. I can have Jim Kemper, who's on the line, speak to the city's efforts to look into Project Room Key. I don't know, Jim, if that's something that you're able to speak to?
Excuse me. I was chowing down my dinner. You had a question about the temporary relocation program?
No, I'm just wondering if the city of Santa Monica has participated in the Project Room Key program?
I want to say that, I don't know. I want to, I think there were hotel, motel rooms used, but I think it was through Connecton County folks with our local social service providers, like the people concerned. I don't know off the top of my head as a short answer.
You probably know, because there's a lot of federal paperwork involved, so my guess is you don't do it.
I was given, Commissioner Lambert, I was given to understand that there was one inquiry, and it didn't pan out.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Pastor, Chapter One. Okay, Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, just a question, a process. So just to make sure I understand this correctly, the EIR for the housing element is not going to be certified until the final housing element is approved this fall. Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
And so I assume that, you know, some of the programs that are discussed with respect to preservation are probably going to be memorialized in some form in a mitigation monitoring reporting program. Do you think that that'll be the case?
Yeah, so we, you know, obviously, because we're writing the housing element and the EIR at the same time, like the project description, you know, is the housing element, right? So that is, whether it's a mitigation monitoring program or it's inherent within the project description, it could, you know, fall either way.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, thank you for asking. I think that's all I have now for Chapter One. Commissioner Reese?
Yeah. It's hard, it's hard for me a little bit. A lot of this stuff I want to talk about. Implementation measures, and that's, that's not going to happen for a few months. So I'm trying to walk a line with that, but- a few months. Um, so I'm trying to walk a line with that, but let, let, look on page 21, four B, where we talk about revised development standards to incentivize housing projects over commercial development. Um, is that the only thing we're, we're focused on? What I'm concerned about is a glut of retail. I mean, we've always focused on let's have walkable communities, have retail on the ground floor because that makes it more walkable. But I think that's, I don't think we can continue doing that because I think there's too much saturation with retail and the retail market is, is so influx. So when I see four B, I, I really want to revise it to, you know, incentivize housing in these areas, but not mandate commercial on the ground floor. Do you guys have a stack on that?
Trying to get to my mute button there. Um, so I, I, I think like it's written some, it's written somewhat broadly. So when we see development standards, you know, that, that encompasses like all the standards in the code. So it's not just about height and FAR. Um, it, it, it can include something like that. Um, you know, if there's a desire to, to say like, for example, um, you know, in the program, I think that's something that we could certainly add, um, you know, to look at. It, it's like four, four B is kind of a, an all encompassing program to, you know, what are the standards that we need to, to update. Um, obviously, you know, the, the sort of significant piece among it is, is the increase in the FARs, but, um, you know, there may be others like what you're mentioning with respect to ground floor retail that we would want, um, to look at. At this point, um, you know, we didn't think it was, um, for, for the program and, you know, like what, we're not writing the code right now. So we didn't kind of get into that level of like really specific detail because, you know, you don't want to mention some and not others, or commit us to a specific path. You know, we've not even had the discussion about what's, you know, the approach on that in, in terms of ordinance implementation. So, you know, I guess like short, short answer is, um, you know, that, that, that is something that we definitely heard, um, through the process, you know, that, that people did want to have considered, um, with, with respect to, you know, the amount of ground floor, uh, retail that is in the city, you know, what we would prefer going forward.
Okay. And then there's a lot of discussion in the applicant, in the document about, um, making the density bonus consistent with AB 1763. But, you know, there's been recent updates like 2345, AB 2345. So I'm wondering if we should just broaden that statement to be consistent with state density, or is there a specific reason we're just honing in on, on 1763? Because that's the one that first gave the three stories, 33 feet and unlimited, unlimited density.
Uh, are you talking about the program? That's.
I'm not talking about a specific program here, Jean. I'm kind of highlighting that I've seen throughout the document a reference to, we want to be consistent with 1763, AB 1763. But there's a lot of, they constantly are revising the density. I am suggesting that we really need to expand the definition to get rid of 1763 and just say state density bonus. I'm asking you, is there a reason you only focused on 17?
So we, if, if that is the case, we, we, we mentioned 1763 in the context of 100% affordable housing. It is not the intent that that's the only change. You know, I think broadly, when you look at the program, it, it says to ensure consistency with, with state density bonus. So there's not a mention to, no, or a specific change. Um, we can certainly note that, you know, and look through the element if there's a reference, that's out of place or what have you. Um, but no, it's, it's not a specific thing just to like, you know, keep it limited to only 1763. Because yes, as you mentioned, there have been changes, there will continue to be changes, you know, in, into the future, we would imagine. So, and we always, you know, update our ordinances to be consistent.
Okay. And then the last, last little comment I want to throw in there, I think it'd be really easy once this, or I think it would be really helpful, once you guys get this document nailed down, to add page numbers to the table of contents. I assume right now it doesn't make any sense because the things, the documents moving around so much, but hopefully that's in the works later on.
Yeah, we had a little technical glitch there, but it'll, in the final one for sure. There'll be links and it'll look, uh, it'll look good.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Um, I just, I have a couple of questions on this introduction. So, uh, because you're, you're sort of laying the baseline here, and I think we've had, uh, we've had a number of members of the community ask this question. So, um, it's been answered to a degree, I think in pieces, but I, I just want to give you an opportunity, uh, to lay it out, which is, um, we've heard from a number of members of the public asking for the loose baseline, so to speak. Like what does, what is this housing element's relationship to the loose? Why can't we just take the loose to HCD? Um, so I'm, in the interest of giving the public an answer to that question, um, do you, could you please take a crack at that?
Um, so, you know, I, I, I guess I would approach that from, from two, two ways. One is, you know, what was analyzed in the loose was somewhere in the ballpark of like 4,400 units, I want to say. Um, you know, what was like the sort of estimated build out at the time, right? When we did that in 2008 and it was projecting through 2013, uh, the downtown was kind of a donut hole in, in the loose. And then that was, you know, added on with the, the DCP adoption in 2017. Um, and that upped, you know, citywide to roughly around 6,000 units. So the reason, you know, when you come at it from a numerical perspective, you know, um, our, our arena is 8895. It's not the loose, you know, or the loose plus the DCP. This is in addition to that. Um, you know, so that's, that's one reason, you know, we're obligated to plan for our arena. And I think the, the other part of that question, which is not sort of a quantitative one, it's really more about, as you've heard us talk about the land use strategy, um, you know, this is, what is being implemented? Like what, what you see in the SSI, it is very much the loose, you know, there, there are still a lot of sites around major transit, around the commercial boulevards. And so, um, I like to describe it as, you know, loose plus the, um, you know, what housing element law requires in terms of arena compliance and the AFFH mandate, you know, so we have, you know, our, our core loose is still there and it's an expansion, um, into other areas that have, you know, perhaps traditionally not accommodated housing, you know, and we've talked about those, you know, like the, the office campus district and Montana and Maine, like these sort of neighborhood commercial areas, you know, that haven't accommodated housing in the past. Um, you know, so that's from a, from a sort of, you know, land use strategy perspective, you know, that's, that's what's happening. And then there's, um, incentives that are being proposed, um, uh, you know, for, um, densifying, um, the, the R1 areas that was in response to council direction to explore, you know, what options are available there. Um, and so those are proposals that are, you know, out here for, for discussion.
Okay. So if I look at, and, and this, and then in terms of that process, um, and forgive me, I'm just going to reference appendix C because I'm, I'm, you know, folks want to go through it in detail, we can, but there's a whole list of loose goals and policies that will need to be amended. And as I read them, they housing or, uh, uh, from, you know, putting housing where there hasn't been housing before, from a process perspective, will this housing element essentially up those, update those by, uh, sort of de facto? Or are we now expected at some point to formally reopen the loose and revise it?
Yeah, we would, um, you know, as part of the, like our, the, the, the way it works is you can adopt the housing element and then the program, you know, can say, you know, you're going to amend the loose, for example, and then you basically have, I think it's like three years to do that. Um, you can see in the implementation timelines that we, our proposal is shorter than that. Um, you know, our intention is to bring all of this together. So people kind of understand it together and it's, doesn't have this timeline between the policy adoption and the implementation, um, later. So, uh, you know, what, what, what you see in the draft right now is we haven't kind of wholesale rewritten them because this is draft and, um, you know, we need to have your input and we need to have the community's input. We need to have, you know, council's, um, ultimate, um, you know, direction, um, on this. So, you know, what we tried to do is at least flag, these are all the policies that we think, you know, would, would need to be revised, um, you know, without specifically rewriting them at this point. But yes, you know, at, at some point, I think we, we expect with the final housing element to, to bring back, um, a resolution, you know, that is, um, consistent with, with council's direction, that is, um, uh, you know, uh, a, you know, sort of, uh, bought off by, by HCD, um, you know, and make sure that everything lines up, um, you know, across zoning ordinance, lose, urban monetary plan downtown, you know, whatever is needed so that it's, it's implementing the housing element.
Okay. So what you're saying is if you think we've been meeting a lot now, lately we're going to be meeting like every day for the next year.
I hope not. Yeah.
Okay. I'm, I still have more questions. Um, so just a quick note on page, I want to say on page 12, uh, yeah, page 12, it's a, it's a typo. I just want to note it. Um, the meeting, the religious congregations meeting was with the Santa Monica area interfaith council, not with the Westside Interfaith Council. Um, unless you also met with the Westside Interfaith Council, but the meeting that I dropped in on was the Santa Monica area interfaith council, and thank you for doing that. Um, so now let's talk because we got a lot of letters. Um, I really want to try to under, unpack this. Um, where is the item? Uh, so let's talk about R1. Um, how, because when I read your R1 program on page, I've been scrolling up and down, um, uh, on four B, on page 22, um, I'm, I, it's sort of, I'm seeing different things in that program and objectives, um, that I'm a little bit, uh, and I want to talk about it more. I'm a little bit in, in Jim Reese's position here of wanting to talk and ask a question, but let's start with council's direction, as I understand it, said, R1 is on the table because single family home zoning historically in Santa Monica has been racially exclusionary, therefore, as the argument went, as Nina Prescott so eloquently articulated to us and then to council, um, there is a racist past here that we need to address. That doesn't mean that anybody living in R1 is a racist. They're not. But the, the, there's a, there's a history there. How did you go from that conversation to 7th, 14th, 26th? How did you land there? And what other options did you consider and exclude? Or are there other options that you're, that are still on the table?
I, I mean, yeah. So, so where we started was obviously council's direction. Um, they, they had a pretty extensive discussion, um, around issues of equity at their March 30, 30th meeting. Um, so, you know, under that broad direction to prepare a compliant housing element of which AFFH is, is, is a major part, uh, a, a major new component, um, of housing element law. And then we were asked to explore options to densify areas that historically excluded diverse populations. So, um, you know, as we indicated, the approach really was trying to think through, um, a- almost like try, trying to parse out what the goal is, you know, and I think we understood from council's direction that, you know, there, there may be sort of two levels of, of goals there. One is about, um, you know, is there a way to include inclusionary units, um, you know, in, in some, uh, dense, densification of, of R1? So that was like one area that we tested. And then the other thing that we wanted to look at is like, well, you know, what can fit within the existing R1 envelope? Cause I think that, um, what we heard, and you know, I think what you heard tonight in the comment letters is really a concern about, you know, what does this mean, um, you know, for these neighborhoods, you know, will it impact, you know, how it looks, how it feels, like all the reasons why, um, uh, you know, people live, um, in, 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 in the R1 neighborhoods, you know, it's, it's, uh, you know, a pleasant environment to, to be in. And, and so, you know, we really wanted to explore what could fit within that existing envelope. And so the, the, those are the, um, architectural, um, studies that, that you see in attachment, um, I think it's B, um, to your staff report. Um, and then we asked, um, so those are the architects on the team. And then we asked HR and A to then layer on the kind of like financial reality piece of this. You know, it's like, that's fine if you can fit it architecturally, but would anybody actually do it? And so, you know, the outcome that came out of that was, you know, cause I think initially, um, what we see a lot of cities, um, across California doing is pursuing the sort of this missing middle housing, right? This sort of nominal increase in, in density, um, in, in single unit dwelling areas. And, uh, we wanted to see does that work for Santa Monica, knowing what we know about the cost of land. And it turns out that it's, it's pretty tough to do that, you know, as you can see in the results. And so we ended up with this, you know, results of, well, you could do potentially up to three units, but really only in, you know, north of Montana. And that's not really meeting the goal of, um, inclusionary, uh, you know, having an inclusionary unit. But if you wanted to do that, then you're really up to six units. And, and then so, you know, where that, I, I, I think that, you know, it wasn't, I, I think I'm just kind of talking to you like the sort of iterative process. I think taking the, the data and analysis together of, um, you know, where we've been historically, um, how these neighborhoods developed and reading the AFFH memo from HCD and, you know, what they are asking cities to do, what, what they're asking jurisdictions to do, um, in, in, in terms of, um, taking actions, um, you know, to, to, to overcome those historic patterns of, of housing segregation. Um, you know, this is kind of, uh, you know, our, our best professional recommendation as to how you might interpret that and apply it to the housing element. Um, you know, there, there certainly may be other ideas and, and opinions around that. And I think as you've heard us say, um, you know, we, we don't know how HCD would view this, right? Cause it's new. Um, you know, so we could certainly submit something else if everybody is, you know, not, not, not supportive of the idea, we could try something else. But, um, you know, I think that the idea to, um, pursue, you know, some, uh, light increases up to three units across R1. And then when we looked at, um, these sort of crosstown routes, um, relative to like what we see in Sunset Park, other, uh, uh, other parts of the city where we have R1, um, you know, you have these pockets of R2. And so we were kind of looking at like, well, if you wanted to do it, like where would be appropriate to do that? So that's where that proposal about, um, you know, potentially thinking about upzoning R1 to R2 on 7th, 14th and 26th, you know, came from, um, and also in the commercial adjacent, um, just, you know, as an idea out there, you know, if you wanted to pursue, um, inclusionary units, this might be a way, um, to do that. But, you know, that's, that, that's essentially how, how we got to what we did, um, you know, with, with respect to the proposal. Um, that's not the only proposal with respect to that, you know, obviously there's the affordable housing overlay as well, um, which was about, you know, allowing the opportunity, um, you know, for affordable housing to occur in areas, you know, that hasn't traditionally been located in, you know, largely it's really been central city.
I, I have more, I have more questions about this, but I want to leave them for discussion. The, the one question I do want to ask, and it bleeds into the one last question that I have to bleed into, and we'll go back to Commissioner Lambert, um, that sort of bleeds into chapter two, but I'll ask it here because I, I hear it in the premise. Um, my understanding is that the, the arena piece of the housing element and the fair housing piece of the housing element are really two separate pieces. Uh, so sub, sub chapters, sort of like sub A is that, is that correct? And then B, um, if that is correct, then to what extent would these discussions about R1 truly not really be about affordability or density, but rather be about accessibility and middle housing that may not in fact be affordable under below market rate standards, but would provide an opportunity to address historic inequities in black versus white wealth, black versus white homeownership, Latino versus white wealth, Latino versus white homeownership, et cetera, et cetera. Right? In other words, if we're truly separating these two issues, and I want to clarify that we are, where in this kind of framing for the housing element, do we see a clear understanding that the strategies to accomplish those may in fact not tie to one another, that it's not always about applying an affordable housing overlay, uh, or, you know, a, a, a level of density necessary to achieve below market rate housing?
Yeah. I, 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 I mean, you know, Rena, Rena compliance and AFFH are, you know, can be seen as separate. I think that, um, the guidance that we've seen, um, in the AFFH guidebook and the SSI guidebook, um, they, they, they do require, um, you know, some overlapping or assessment of applying AFFH to your suitable sites inventory. So they're not like totally divorced from, from each other. Um, you know, I think in looking at, uh, what, uh, you know, of, but, but looking at sort of, you know, potential policy for the R1 areas, um, we really look back also to the, um, the, you know, last spring's assessment of fair housing, right? Which, which did a, a full assessment of fair housing in the city. And I think, you know, what counted that was like two major goals was, you know, you need to, um, really it was. really, it was about like producing more housing and really increasing the supply of affordable housing. And if you look at the first goal in that assessment of fair housing, it speaks to increasing the supply of affordable housing. And, you know, one of the strategies in there is about exploring zoning changes. Ability to develop affordable housing in areas without publicly supported housing developments. And, you know, we've shared the map of what that looks like and where that has happened, you know, and where it hasn't happened. And, you know, that's kind of, you know, when I say the sort of, you know, data led us to, you know, put out this proposal, you know, that's, that's really like, we relied on, you know, that prior assessment as well, in addition to, you know, just the analysis of, you know, census data and, you know, economic data, all that stuff, you know, that we've been doing. And it's in the existing conditions reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert.
I just want to make a statement. In my opinion, we're not talking about affordable housing north of Montana. No matter how we say it, it's not happening. So it's a very different way of approaching it. My question to you, Jing, and staff is, have you considered, rather than segregating north of Montana and northeast, or just basically looking at the north of Wiltshire community? Because Wilmont has the highest percentage of rent-controlled rental units in the city, in any area, eco, mid-cities, wherever. It has the highest number and percentage of rent-controlled units, which is basically middle-income housing in Wilmont. Would it benefit us to look at that as a market and consider that as our, part of our affirmative marketing? Because it already exists.
Yeah, I mean, but I, you know, I'm not saying the way we're doing it is like 100% the right way. You know, this is so, absolutely. I mean, I think if there's different perspectives, you know, on how we might, you know, of how people think we might achieve that goal or demonstrate affirmatively furthering fair housing, I think, you know, we're certainly very open to, you know, hearing some different viewpoints on that.
But have you also considered looking at, I suggest if you haven't, looking at the most recent Rent Control Board annual report? Because it shows where the rental housing is in the city. And what it shows is Sunset Park, which clearly has an R1 pocket, is primarily multifamily housing. So I'm just wondering if you're kind of looking at the bigger picture of these areas with R1s in them, is actually maybe being more diverse and affordable than we would have thought of otherwise?
Yeah, I mean, we looked at, you know, zoning, so I think in our, in our presentation, you know, we looked at sort of mixed diversity of housing types, diversity of zoning within kind of, you know, neighborhoods in the city. And, you know, clearly Wilmont is an all-multi-unit neighborhood, you know, but some neighborhoods are not, are predominantly R1. So, you know, we've seen the data, obviously Wilmont has a very high percentage of rent-controlled units in the city. And, you know, there was a desire to present the information in that manner.
No, I get it, I get all that. I'm just wondering why we are focusing on these R1 pockets when we have multifamily all around them in the same community? That's just, I just wonder why you're doing that.
Yeah, certainly. I think, you know, the level of what geography you choose to look at, you know, I mean, Santa Monica's not that big either, you know, we're a total of 100 miles, right? So, you know, and I think it's hard for us to say, you know, HCD would look at it as a citywide thing versus a more micro level. You know, that's something that, like, we're just trying to read the requirements and trying, you know, to be transparent in how we're applying it. And like I said, you know, I don't, I can't say that, you know, I'm not the side on whether like that's right or wrong. You know, it's just what we're reading.
It's a different perspective, and I just wondered if you've thought about it?
No, we, yeah, I mean, I think we have, you know, in looking at that idea. It's just looking, looking at the words and what the requirements are. It didn't seem like it was saying that, but I could see how it might. So I think it's certainly worth consideration.
Thanks.
I've got Alice, Commissioner Raskin, you had your hand up.
I just want to ask a follow-up question on something you raised, Chair Lambert. And this goes to a question that Commissioner Fonda already asked at the last meeting, about, you know, what is the precise number of units in our capacity under existing LEUS standards? And I just wanted to clarify if the answer is found in the tables at the back of Appendix F, which has a comparison, I think, if I'm reading this correctly, of what the capacity is under staff's calculations of existing zoning and the proposed changes housing element. Am I reading that correctly?
Jing, I can answer this. Are you referring to the table, the very large table in the back? The Excel table?
That, yeah, yeah, at the very, very end of Appendix F.
Yes, that's basically HCD's required suitable sites inventory form. And what we've done is kind of, there's three separate tables that HCD requires. What we've done is basically merged important information of the first and the second table together. And so you'll see the existing, what is existing units per acre under current standards, as well as what the proposed units per acre under the new standards.
So then just to be totally clear, if you take the total number of units under the red column, which is the existing one, add them all up, be the number that you're telling us is the capacity under existing LEUS, existing zoning standards, et cetera?
I'm sorry, you cut out there for a second, I didn't hear the beginning of the question.
Sorry about that. So if you take the column that has the red title for the existing, existing standards, and you add up all of the units that could be produced, does that get us to the number that you say can be built under LEUS as it is now?
Correct, it should.
Got it. So by my math, then, and this could be wrong, but that gets us to, I, let me see here, 5,119 units, is that, is that correct?
It's roughly around 5,000, yeah. There might be some discrepancies in some of the numbers because it doesn't include, that list might have a couple of discrepancies because of their approved and pending projects, because we applied the discount factor, so, to the 10% discount factor, so it won't completely add up. But yes, it should be roughly in the realm of 5,000 units.
Got it. And so then that number does not include additional units that could be granted through existing density bonus law or other discretionary approvals above and beyond existing zoning standards?
That is correct. It doesn't account for state density bonus because we are not allowed to assume the state density bonus application on it. And number two, it doesn't account for ADU, I should also mention that, so.
Okay, got it.
And feasibility, sorry. And so we assume all the, all the standards would be feasible when in reality may not be?
Got it. Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be helpful to break down that total number somewhere in our public documents, just for ease of reference, because so many people have had this question of what can be built out under LEUS? You know, having some sort of explanation of the methodology that got there, that got us there would be helpful as well. I'm sure that we're going to revisit this topic in our questions later tonight, so I'll cut this off here, but thank you for jumping on us.
Well, let's actually, I mean, this is the kind of thing, if we could, you know, if we do take a break and come back tomorrow, I think this would be a great example of something where it would be possible for staff to run that total and kind of give us a sense of how you'd like us to read that number. I think that would be very helpful, both for the people who are asking and for us to understand what we're looking, you know, in total at.
Sure, yeah. The total number is provided in the PowerPoint, but we can definitely make that in the final housing element.
That would be great, yeah. Because so many people are asking as well, so. Do you have another question?
No. I'll stop there, I know we've got a lot to get through.
Okay, let's, unless anybody else has a burning question on chapter one, let's go to chapter two. Great, so we'll start with Commissioner Reese. Any questions on chapter two? No, okay.
No, I do not.
Back to you, Alice.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I do, I would do want to have a question about the ADUs on page 61. I think this is still on chapter two?
Uh, let's take a look.
ADUs on a different chapter.
That is chapter four.
I don't have a question, though.
Okay. Back to you, Alice.
Uh, nothing now.
Okay. All right, Alisa?
Nothing.
Okay, Leslie?
No.
Nina? Oh, Mario?
No.
Okay. I'll be the loner then. I still really want to, I, you've alluded to this, Jing, but I just want to ask, and maybe this is a conversation we can pick up tomorrow night, here's what I'm struggling with on the R1, as it relates to our assessment of fair housing. It's, and I'd love to understand it, somebody in the public comment tonight said that, that there was the assertion that if we changed R1 piecemeal, what we would essentially be doing is creating winners and losers inside the existing footprint. And Leslie's raising this in an interesting question, it's like, what are we looking at? Depending on how we draw the map, we either have a very exclusionary area or we don't. And if we zoom out, we're a lot less exclusionary than if we zoom in. What, what are the, you know, what does it mean for us to be kind of taking a scalpel to these zoning areas in the absence of a couple of things? One is, in the absence of the city of LA or any other city in LA County doing the same with respect to single-family zoning. And D, with respect to the fact of, if it is in fact racist, then why would we make it less racist? Why wouldn't we make it not racist? So, how do we, I'm just trying to unpack what the, and this may go to the guidebook in terms of what we're expected to produce for HCD, but I'm, I'm struggling with what we're, I want us to do the right thing here, but I also want us to do this in a way that doesn't create more wrongs in the process of attempting to create a right.
No, I mean, I appreciate that. Give us a moment to think of, this is...
It could come back tomorrow, I mean, I would be happy to throw it into the conference room, let's talk about it tomorrow.
That's not really a question for staff, right? I mean, that's like, this is like a point of discussion for policy.
Well, I think it is a question for staff because I think if we, if we come back and we say, look, at the end of the day, we have to do something with R1 because it will, unless we do something with R1 that Santa Monica will be told it has not moved unaffirmatively for furthering fair housing, that's one thing. But I'm trying to understand the logic behind.
It's a discussion, I have lots of things to say about that, but we should wait for discussion.
I, that's why I said, let's talk about it tomorrow, but I wanted to pose the question to staff so that if there are more specifics we need to think with, we can get a more robust answer to that question.
I mean, I think I can, you know, we've provided as much information as we can to you. You know, ultimately, I think, you know, you're, I appreciate that you're asking for like, you know, some clarity around this as to like what it is. And to be, I mean, to be really transparent and honest, you know, I, I don't, I don't think it would be right for us to say like, you know, this is the bright line, like this is the black and white of it, because it is, it's new, you know. I don't have guidance as to how HCD is like actually implementing or viewing this. You know, we have their memo, we have the law, and, you know, we've tried to implement it and read it as best as we can, and present all the information for your discussion. So, you know, that's, that's probably all I can, you know, share at this point about it. And yeah, it really should be something that you discuss.
Sounds good. Okay, chapter three, starting with Commissioner Fonda Benardi. Any questions?
No questions at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Fresco.
No questions.
Commissioner Lambert?
I have a question, actually, a comment and a suggestion to staff. On page 47, you cite that there are 11,572 single-family homes in Santa Monica, but there are 6,500 R1 lots. So what that indicates to me is that there are thousands of single-family homes, or lots that are already zoned R2 probably. And that is a development potential. Do you want to point that out in the housing element? You can't identify, you can't identify the sites, because you don't know which ones are the... But it's a lot of underdeveloped property in R2 areas.
We do, we do have, yeah, we do have R1, we do have single-unit dwellings throughout our multi-unit zones. That's a fact, you know, so.
I'm just wondering if you want to say something, there are thousands of single-family homes on R2 lots, and we've actually seen condos come in, you know.
Oh, you mean like just adding kind of an explanation as to that number?
Yeah, you might just say that there's a potential development possibility because there are thousands of units that are underdeveloped property.
We can certainly add that clarification.
And that's also worth, you know, I don't know if this is a discussion point, but since you raised it, I, you know, I think there's a misapprehension among people. Well, it's a comment, so I won't make it.
It is.
It is, it is.
I was really surprised.
You know, exactly. Let me phrase it as a question. Do you have any, do you have any comparative data, Jing, that could be useful to us or to the public or to council about the pace of development that unfolds when a single-family residential zone is turned into something that permits multiple units? Does it all happen overnight, or does it take years and years and years to change?
Yeah, we can, we have done a little bit of homework about that in terms, you know, that the cities that have embarked on the, in, you know, it's not being proposed that we're eliminating R1 zoning, some cities have done that. We're happy to share what we found about that, you know, cities that have done that. And I can just share a short form, not a lot has happened.
I think it'd be useful also, because we've heard a lot of this from the public, there's got to be data on the effect on property values by upzoning R1. Because we're hearing from a lot of people that their property values are going to plummet, which I don't believe for a minute. But I'm sure there's data on that somewhere, it'd be useful to have that.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see what we can find about that. I don't know about that, we'll look.
That would be great. Yeah, there is the article from Seattle, but I think it was a neighborhood in Seattle or Portland that was 30 years' worth of data, I think. And, yeah, okay, so that'd be helpful to have.
It would.
Okay. Which direction are we going? We're going to Commissioner Pastor.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I mean, and I really don't have, my questions are a lot unanswered mostly before meetings in written correspondence with staff, so I'm really waiting for the discussion.
Great, Commissioner Raskin.
Just one question for the benefit of the public, just to clarify this. The goals that are specifically memorialized in housing element have legal binding effect in the sense that those are the measuring sticks against which projects are measured to see whether they comply with the general plan standards and the housing element standards. And so just, if, Jing, I don't know if you want to take this, but if you could just clarify the legal effect that these goals have for projects specifically?
Well, usually, when we assess individual development projects against the general plan as a whole, you know, we compare, the standard really, are they generally consistent? You know, it's not like precise, precisely exactly, you know, are you like literally the letter of that policy? That's not really the standard of review for goals and policies. The most specific part of the housing element really are the implementation programs, and most of that responsibility falls on the city, as opposed to private development. You know, the commitment, the housing element in terms of the actions are really the city's responsibility to carry out and implement, you know, all of the programs that you're listing in there. But to the extent that there are ones that apply to private development, you know, they would be reviewed for consistency with that general goal or policy. And it's the same, we take the same approach with like LEUS policies, you know, there are hundreds of them. So it's about general.
Okay, uh, are you all set? Okay, do you have more, Alice?
That's all.
Okay, uh, Jim, I think this may be, are we?
Are we in section four now?
Uh, we're, we're still in three. Um, do you have questions for three?
Phil don't have questions.
Okay, uh, and I don't have questions for three. Um, so why don't you kick us off with questions for four?
Okay, so real quickly on the ADU, there's a figure four point four, I believe it is, that talks about ADU production over the last three years, and then they talk a little bit about twenty twenty-one. And in the first three months of twenty twenty-one, there was four ADUs in progress, which appears to be a pretty dramatic drop from the two years before, if you, if you play that out over the entire year. I'm wondering if staff knows why, you know, if has an opinion on why that is so low? And does it really make sense to assume the eighty, the eighty in it? Per year?
Yeah, this is, this is Ross. Um, you know, I, I can't really give you a clear answer of why twenty twenty-one's, you know, first column of four is so much lower than the past years. Um, it might just be when we pulled the data, maybe there was a slow couple first months, I mean, given COVID, maybe construction was down for a moment. Um, but, you know, we can still try to rerun numbers. Um, but that is why we also kind of lowered our, the eighty unit average over the next eight years to kind of account for this decline in single unit ADU development, um, and maybe an increase in multifamily. Um, but there's not a real clear indicator of why that was lower in twenty twenty-one, at least not that I can see.
Okay, at, at a minimum, I think you should try to update this number based on May-June numbers, just to see if we get a little better read on it. My sense is we might, we might be suffering from the really high cost of construction right now. It's certainly not that construction is tapering off. Um, but the costs have just gone through the roof everywhere, so I'm wondering if that has an impact. It looks like Commissioner Flamm already had.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, um, I have a, I, I, I wanted to follow up on that too, which is we had a letter suggesting that we were triple counting. Um, can you clarify that, those numbers? If you're, if you're going to redo the table, could you just, I, I, I don't know whether you triple counted or not, like I, just tell us whether these are unduplicated counts, um, because, yeah.
Based off of the information we got, I've triple counted even prior to this meeting, that I've always used the most recent, you know, category a building permit was in to be counted towards that one. So I have looked at that myself and I'm not seeing any evidence of triple or double counting.
So there were only two hundred and forty, there were, there were two hundred and forty-three units uh, in progress. They're not.
Correct.
Compared to that. Okay, all right. Sorry, Mario, go ahead.
Well, two things, uh, one of the biggest variables in that drop is COVID. COVID basically wiped out our billing department. Uh, it took me a hundred and fifty-nine days in plan check for an ADU. It's supposed to be done in sixty days and we are the slowest city on the West Coast as far as ADUs go. On the other hand, it's practically academic because twenty twenty-one doesn't count for the next cycle. So even though there's been, like you say, Jim, a totally run up in lumber costs, which is going to just crush us later downstream, we're not yet feeling the pain of that lumber. Uh, we're already feeling the pain of the plan check, uh, kind of let's call it deadlines and death that we're experiencing because we're not staffed up. And we have to get back to staffed up and then we have to get through the hump of lumber prices and a couple of other things downstream. So there's going to be a depression in all of our numbers, I think, at the beginning, at the beginning of this year, probably the next year, and we will bounce back. So I don't think we can, we necessarily need to use that low number as a reference point. I think it's an anomaly, it's that black swan as far as our, our ADU production.
Yeah, and that's why the average, we didn't include twenty twenty-one because we just felt like it was too much of a in-progress number.
Leslie?
I have a follow-up question to yours, Sean. Um, I'm still not clear on the triple counting. And the reason I ask that is, wouldn't it make sense that some of the permit issue, permits issued actually were completed in the last column, so you would be double counting?
No, so, I mean, the, the data basically from our database breaks it down into kind of the in-progress, permit issued and completed. So if there was a building permit that had a date in the completed column, I did not count it in the in-progress or permit issued column. It only went into the completed column.
So the permit issue, for example, in twenty nineteen, there were thirty-seven permits issued. That thirty-seven doesn't appear anywhere else.
Uh, what do you mean, doesn't appear anywhere else?
Would that thirty-seven appear in the final column?
Uh, it would, it would appear in the total, but it would not appear in the completed because those permit issued might be currently under construction. So it's kind of like, you have to add up the in-progress, permit issued and complete, and those three numbers together are the cumulative number we have for ADUs that year. Um, they, there shouldn't be anything, there shouldn't be one building permit in multiple categories.
Right, but Ross, I think what we're getting at is, it could be in progress in twenty eighteen and then the permit gets introduced in twenty nineteen and then it gets done in twenty twenty.
Right.
Is it going to get counted in each of those rows?
Right.
No, it is not. Again, whenever, if, if a permit, if a building permit was, let's say, pulled in two thousand and eighteen, but it was completed in two thousand and nineteen, it only went into the two thousand and nineteen row. It, it didn't go into the two thousand and eighteen at all. I always use the most recent date that that, that that permit was in to put it into the appropriate category.
So then to Mario's point, this is an instructive illustration of the slowdown because there were eighty-seven projects in progress in twenty twenty and no, no permits issued in twenty twenty-one as of March. Whereas according to your counting method, Ross, what should be the case is there should have been a lower number of in-progress in twenty twenty because those would have then been shifted over to permit issued in twenty twenty-one.
Possibly, or there might, they might just still be in progress.
Right, exactly.
You know, yeah. So they, once, if, once an in-progress unit, let's say in twenty twenty, let's say if the, one of those eighty-seven got a permit issued today, it would delete from the in-progress in twenty twenty and now go under the permit issued in twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Is that, okay.
Yes. I, I think it's really important to state that, like, somewhere on this document, say, this is an unduplicated count, no ADU appears more than once in this table.
Sure, and I can try our best to kind of do a slightly updated one to May. It, it takes a while because it, you know, there's hundreds of permits and we have to go through each of the descriptions. So we'll do our best to kind of give you as updated numbers soon as we can, hopefully by tomorrow.
All right, we, Jim, you still probably have questions because we all just sort of piggyback on that ADU one.
Guys, it's, that's, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, uh, Alice? Anything for four?
I, I guess now's the time to dig a little deeper into, uh, the tables in that appendix F. Um, I mean, I mean, if, if other people have questions that are related to, uh, what we were just talking about, I'm happy to, to defer, but I, I'll, I can go now if you, if you like.
Uh, take us down the rabbit hole.
Uh, all right, all right. So, um, I just want to really make sure that I'm understanding this, this, uh, clearly directly. So, all right, so in the tables at, at the back of, uh, appendix F, there are separate categories for the maximum density allowed on the parcel and then a separate total for the total capacity. Uh, for some sites, uh, I'll give you just one example, a twenty-two eighteen Broadway, a point four or five acre site, the maximum density allowed for a mixed-use boulevard low site is thirty-one units. And the total capacity, uh, is then listed as only fourteen units. Um, can you just take us, uh, through the steps of how, uh, the maximum density, uh, is then transmogrified into a total capacity that is, in some cases, less than half?
Uh, Rachel, did you want to talk about the, because there, there was a development assumptions that kind of converted that, right?
Yeah, so what we did was because we don't do units per acre, of course, we do FARs. Um, and so what we did was we, you know, looked at what the existing FARs were, um, or currently are. Um, in the red kind of columns, we looked at what the existing FARs are, applied, you know, those FARs to the site. Um, and then applied kind of our assumptions with regards to unit mix requirements, um, average unit size, um, per square, uh, unit size, um, in terms of square footage, and that's how we got to the maximum density allowed. Um, and so, uh, sorry, yeah, that's how we got to the total capacity. And so, um, those are the, so the total capacity is reflected in units. And then what we did was we took the units and divided by the, um, land area to get to the units per acre. And so that's, so the, so the total capacity column is basically what we use to calculate the maximum density allowed. Does that make sense?
Uh, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm a little bit, uh, still a little bit, little bit, uh, lost here. Um.
Okay, so let me, okay, so let me try to explain a little simpler. So the total capacity reflects how much, how many units can be developed on that particular site based on our existing FARs. And so once we got to the number of units that could be developed, we divided it by the existing site area. And so that's how we got to the units per acre. So the total capacity column is basically used to calculate the maximum density allowed. Because we don't, since we don't use maximum density allowed, we have to calculate basically specifically for each site.
Right, but sorry, Alice, this is part of the same thing. So, but how did, I, I'm unclear as to how you got from FAR to capacity, right? So let's say your FAR is just for purposes of ease, a hundred thousand square feet, right? So a site has a hundred thousand square feet of capacity.
So if it has a hundred thousand square feet of capacity, we applied the FAR. And so if it's a two-point-oh FAR, for example, that's two hundred thousand square feet, we divided it by, we applied the assumptions of, you know, um, eighty percent ground floor play. And then so, you know, you might get a hundred and eighty thousand square feet of floor area. And from that, we divided that by the average unit size to get to the number of units, which is reflected into total capacity.
But the, I'm sorry, the average unit size for the city, for the zone, for the, from the HRNA analysis?
From the HRNA analysis. So HRNA, the HRNA is now, at, at one thousand and fifty square feet, and that includes, that includes kind of the common areas. And so it's not unit size specifically, but includes common areas as well. So, so let's say, so let's say we have, with a one thousand square foot site, for example, you get two that, with a two-point-oh FAR, you get two thousand square feet and then you divide it by the average unit size, which is one thousand, roughly one thousand, you get two units. And so from those two units, we divided by the square footage of the site, of the particular site, to get to the units per acre.
And, and I would note that those, those assumptions came from housing projects that have been built. So, so we looked at, you know, actually completed housing projects to, to sort of, you know, get a sense of, you know, how much coverage happens. Um, you know, average unit size across a range of, of the type, that sort of thing. So, um, it was kind of ground tested across what's been actually built.
Yeah, so the maximum density allowed is calculated based on the total capacity column. It's basically how many units can we fit on the site based on existing FAR? And from that, we divided it by the site area to get to the units per acre. Since we don't operate in density calculations and we operate in FAR, we have to somehow translate it into density of units per, per acre.
When you talk about like total capacity is like the absolute, absolute number? Units per acre is just a, you know, a, 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 a mathematical calculation.
And in that calculation, you discounted the ground floor for commercial reasons? It's just commercial or ramps and structure that was not incorporated in the eighty percent ground plane? How, how did you handle that, that commercial ground floor?
We, we did account for the commercial, so we, a commercial ground floor square footage, so we took that out as, it's not counting as residential floor area.
That, Alice, that might explain some of the drop that you're seeing.
Yeah, I mean, I've been getting a lot of questions about how in, in many cases, uh, the maximum density allowed drops down in some cases by, you know, from, uh, you know, thirty to ten, uh, in, in some cases. And I know that there's, you know, a complex formula that's been developed by HCD and we're looking at site-specific constraints, but, um, you know, uh, I think the public really wants to know, you know, how, how we're getting, uh, specifically from, uh, you know, like you said, you know, in a two thousand square foot lot with a two-point-fAR, from two units down to something that, that's different. And, um, uh, you know, if, if there's a specific, uh, step-by-step guide that I, I'm, I'm missing, then please let, let me know.
So on page thirteen, there's an example capacity calculation table. Um, I want to make sure I'm looking at the right table. So, uh, sorry, that's on page. There is a, I'm sorry, page fourteen, fourteen, yes. Page fourteen, there's example cap, capacity calculation. So, for example, we applied for a site, for a site in the MUB that has a site area of ten thousand square feet. We applied all of these assumptions in terms of building coverage, um, ground floor that's doomed as commercial. And so that's how we got to the max number of units. That's the capacity, that's the fifteen units, as you see on page fourteen. And so from that, we divided the fifteen units by the site areas, which is ten thousand square feet, and transited that to acreage. And so I, I, we couldn't, in our final drop, we could add in the, kind of the, the units per acre calculation, but it's basically a straight conversion into the site area.
So ultimately, the average square foot number, uh, is of great significance to the final conclusions here. Uh, and, and you said that that comes from HRNA?
Um, in terms of the residential square footage per unit?
That, that's right, yeah.
Yes, I mean, that's, that's what HRNA uses and that's consistent with what, with the projects that we've seen in the, in the past.
But I mean, ultimately, if, if you, uh, drop that down to, you know, six hundred square feet per unit or seven hundred square feet, you know, that would give us quite a much larger capacity.
Right, but that, as I said before, that accounts for kind of lobby, lobby space, you know, um, you know, hallway space and all that. So it's not just the size of the unit, it accounts for other areas as well.
Right, got it. Um, getting back to something, uh, you had said earlier, uh, you said that, um, we can't use a density bonus, uh, when calculating the capacity of existing sites. I, I thought that that, you, you can't use a density bonus when existing, you know, uh, looking at future capacity and not existing capacity. Um, am I, am I wrong on it?
And I don't believe you can use it for existing or future capacity because the density bonus is something that developers have to ask for. And so that is not assumed to be the base. And so, um, HCD's guidebook is clear that we are not allowed to apply the state density bonus to the capacity calculations.
Okay, um, yeah, uh, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to, to take a, take another look at that, uh, step-by-step guide. Um, when.
Wait, sorry, sorry, Alice, for, will you repeat that one more time, Rachel, so I understand?
So HCD's guidebook, um, the SSI guidebook states that we can't assume the application of, you know, the extra floor area or actually, yeah, from the state density bonus because that's something that applicants and developers have to ask for.
All right, all right, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for, for clarifying that. Um, so, uh, so I was looking through, looking through my notes here. Um, when, ultimately, when, when we do, uh, revise our, our, our density bonus laws, um, you know, I, I assume that, um, you know, that, that's, that's something that's going to be, uh, figured out, you said, uh, uh, You said, uh, uh, at some point later in 2021. Is that about the timeline you think would be accurate?
Yeah, the intent would be to bring that forward because it's, it's quite germane to, you know, the overall strategy of, um, increasing, you know, establishing support, supportable FARs. As I indicated, the intent is to bring that with the final housing element, these implementing ordinances. So we, I think we put the timing as like by December 31st, you know, the end of the year. Um, obviously allowing that, you know, it might not quite all get done by October 15th. And if that doesn't, there's a little bit more room to that.
Um, yeah, I would, I would flag, you know, for our own internal discussion, uh, in the future, whether we'd want to consider maybe some sort of IZO that might, uh, you know, uh, get us across the finish line. Um, so, yeah, um, you know, I, I think, um, yeah, I'll, I'll stop my questions there about the, uh, the, the unit, uh, uh, numbers. Um, so jumping on this thing totally different for, um, this proposal to add R2 zoning in, in residential areas. So if I understand it correctly, R2 has a maximum build out of 2,000 square, it's a 2,000 square foot limit, but R1 doesn't. Is that right?
Well, R1, the limit is, is one unit. So, um, the, uh, in terms of like, uh, air, uh, floor area potential, it's, it's controlled by parcel coverage. Um, uh, so, so the measure of, you know, there's not really density, I guess it's, it's one unit and then it's like 45%. Um, parcel coverage is what you get for a new, um, single unit dwelling, um, in the R2. It's the lesser of one for 1,000 or four units.
Yeah, but, but it is just, I would assume that there are quite a few R1 structures that are much, much larger than that. Is that right?
Oh, you mean in terms of the, the overall size? Um, you know, Ross, do you remember the size, you, you had done the size comparisons?
Are, are you talking about your, Ellis, Commissioner Raskin? Are you saying that you assume that there's many R1 current developments that are all maybe, let's say, legal non-conforming because they're over the current size maximum? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I, it, it seems to me that, that there are a lot of, uh, this is my guess, that there are a lot of R1 structures that are bigger than 2,000 square.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, before the, I think the largest parcel coverage R1 was able to have in recent memory was 61% of the size. So 61% parcel coverage on an R1 parcel would still be lower, I believe. And I can do the math real quick of what would be allowed today under R2 parcel coverage sizes. Because, for example, the 61% only was allowed to have, let's say, a 30% ground floor, and R2 is allowed to have a 45% ground floor. So just without even knowing the exact numbers, I can, you can already see that R2 development size has been always bigger than even what R1 used to be.
Is that, is that still true if you, um, you know, count for an ADU that, uh, would potentially be built into, uh, you know, setback areas?
I think when you count in the, if you do 1,000 square foot ADU, I believe it actually, it, it gets you around like 65% of parcel coverage. So a little bit bigger than what R1 used to have, but I still believe it's under R2. But I can, uh, do that math real quick if you have, give me like 30 seconds and come back to me.
I, I, I think the difference also is that in the R2, like currently, it's like 45% parcel coverage. And then you get a second floor, where you get like 90% of that ground floor, you know? So you get a double, whereas in the R1, it's a total parcel coverage across the multiple floors, like you don't get to add it up. So there's the difference that you do get more over the floor area, right?
I just, I just did the quick math. Um, an R2 parcel with the parcel coverage that Jane just explained, that the 45% of the ground and then the 90 of that 40% can be a cumulative of 6,412 square feet. Where the 61% parcel coverage that used to exist in the R1, which is kind of where you see the much larger homes, really would have only maximized out at 4,575, uh, parcel coverage on a standard 7,500 square foot lot. So even if you add the 1,000 square feet to that, it is still under what R2's maximum development would be.
Got it, okay. Um, and sorry, what was the 6,000 number? I'm just taking notes here, what was the 6,000?
Yeah, uh, it was 6,412, uh, which is, uh, which is comprised of 3,375 on the ground floor and 3,037.5 on the second floor. Which is as big as an R, an R2 development could be on a 7,500 square foot lot.
Got it, okay. Um, I, I just have two, two more, uh, real quick questions. Um, for the development at, at Bergamot, it sounds like the, the vision is, uh, to completely redevelop the site and, um, you know, essentially, uh, evict the current art tenants. And I'm, I'm curious if there's been, uh, any outreach done, uh, recently to, uh, the tenants there with respect to hazel process?
No, I, I, and I think before, I absolutely do not want to cause unnecessary alarm around this because there has been a, a very long, uh, extensive community process around that. Um, council direction was very clear with respect to the art center that there, there should be consideration for the gallerists, um, and the art uses on the site, you know? So, you know, we're not, we're not writing an RQ or anything like that here. But, um, that's, that is, that was not council's direction about, um, removing the art, arts uses from the site.
Got it, thanks for, thanks for clarifying that. Um, you know, one thing I saw with, with respect to both Bergamot and a few other, uh, city owned parcels was, was that it, it's contemplated that, that some, uh, portion of the site would be left for either market rate development. I think in Bergamot, you said maybe 10%, the left market rate, um, or the other commercial uses in other sites. That strikes me as being inconsistent with the Surplus Lands Act, and I, I'm, I'm curious if we can get an opinion on that.
Um, in terms of the use of it, I, I think that we, obviously, you know, whatever process we go through, um, we need to be consistent with the Surplus Lands Act. I think we weren't, weren't really accounting for that. And this, this, this was just from the purposes of the capacity calculation. I think for, for surplus lands, um, I believe there's like a minimum of 100 units or something like that. Um, you know, so I'm not sure that it's inconsistent, um, you know, in, in looking at the capacity calculation because the, 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 the direction, and I think what we implemented is really prioritizing predominantly 100% affordable housing on there. That, that was the direction we were asked to look at. Um, so I, I don't believe we have something here that says, you know, that there would be, um, some percentage that isn't. You know, uh, we, we haven't kind of concluded, you know, made that conclusion in any way on the city owned site. I think the analysis is just, um, we, we took the step to identify what the, um, financing gap might be for that affordable housing, and however that might be filled is, you know, we're at this point, the housing element is ambivalent about what that is.
Got it. All right, that's all the, all the questions I've got. And, uh, Jill Anderson, maybe this is, it looks like your camera might have gone, uh...
Yeah, can you hear, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're in Oz, you're in Oz.
Yeah, and, and my screen is going crazy. I was just gonna throw it to Commissioner Pastor and, um, she, I'm gonna drop off and come back on because this is really weird right now. I'll be right back.
Uh, let's see, so I think we are still in chapter, um...
Four.
Four. And so now I think we move on to Commissioner Fresco.
Um, like, is my voice on?
Yes, do you have any questions?
Yeah, no, like you, uh, I spent a lot of time grilling staff prior to this evening, so I'm questioned out. I have lots of comments building up, so.
Yes, as do I. Uh, Commissioner Fonda Benardi.
Same, same disease. Lots of, uh, lots of comments, few questions.
Okay, so then let's move on to chapter five. And this is the implementation chapter, and so I expect that this is where we're going to certainly have the most discussion. Um, but let's just focus on questions. So Commissioner Fonda Benardi, back to you.
Again, I, I don't have any questions at this point.
Commissioner Fresco?
Dido.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert?
I have a question. Um, I have talked in length about the first paragraph on page 89, so I'm not gonna bore everybody with that. Uh, I, and I still have issues with, um, the quantified objective. I don't know why this is such a hard thing for me to understand. Basically, the number you come up with is based on existing reality. It is basically existing zoning and land use and, you know, what you think the funding possibilities are, et cetera, et cetera. Is that correct? Jane?
Yes, that's right. It, it represents, um, yeah, I mean, uh, a big amount of it is, you know, what's in the pipeline, what's approved, um, as to the city owns. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's what the quantified objective asks you to do, so.
Right, but on the, on the page before that, maybe it's a misprint. It says that it's like a five-year projection, did you mean eight years?
No, that is, I think that's actually taken from the government code. I think that five-year is related to, um, that can be constructed really over a five-year, oh, yeah, maybe it is typo, but, but we'll double check that.
Yeah, because if you extrapolate that from five years, you come up with a RENA, which is not what you want to do.
Yeah. That's sure, yeah, that...
And I, just, just for the sake of the rest of the commission, and, and, I mean, Jim and I have talked about this, the $480,000 a unit is not real, um, and I think you know that. Actually, you said 650, which is what you base the 2.9 billion on. Um, and I think it's really important to know, and I'm not sure it's clear, this 2.9 billion is not local contribution. It, 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 right?
That's correct, yeah, that, it, it's, it's not intended to represent local contribution, no. It's, it's, like, the idea was to give a sense of, you know, our RENA allocation is this amount of affordable housing. Um, and, you know, what, what would it take in terms of total dollar amount? Uh, again, in, you know, independent of, you know, what the funding sources. So it's either city funds or state or federal or private funds, right? It's just like, this is the total ball of, of, you know, funding that's necessary to bring that to fruition. We could, um, I think as, as we've talked about, you know, before the meeting, we certainly could refine that to provide a range, you know, depending on scenarios, because it's, I, I think as we've discussed, it's neither one or the other. It's not 100% public assistance, nor is it 100% inclusionary. It's probably some combination of those, so we can certainly refine.
I'm not even sure you need to include the numbers and what all those represent, but I think it would be good to put a sentence in, this includes private money for inclusionary. And maybe city land and tax credits and, you know, all the different things that are going to make the affordable housing. Because I think some people that receive this 2.9 billion and they tell them to freak out. I think that's what the city's on the line for.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly clarify the, the possible sources of funding, you know, for that.
Okay, thank you. Let me say.
Eric, but, um, I'm gonna go next. I just have one question.
Um, I'm fine.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lambert.
No, I just, that paragraph has driven me crazy since I read it, so.
Um, I, I know this is somewhere, but I just can't remember exactly where. Um, so I had a question on page 63 with program 1A, specifically in the background section, that I want to understand, um, so for the suitable sites. So if there is a suitable site that was identified in the last RENA cycle and it did not get developed, right? Then the, um, I understand that the city must allow by right a development on those sites that the project includes 20% affordable. Um, do we know how many sites we have like that? And what we think the unit yield would be?
How, how many sites were recycled from the, from the fiscal? Yeah, um, yeah, we do have that number. Rachel, do you, do you have a?
Twenty-five parcels. And, um, in terms of the yield, it's in appendix F, and that's, it would, let me see here, actually. Um, I will get back to you on the yield because it is not specifically parsed out.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't think I have any other... Yeah, go, um...
I'm, I'm trying to, trying to, again, but it's not, I don't know if you can hear me. It's, it's not pretty on my, my computer.
We can hear you, but I will continue to, um, clean everyone here.
Thank you.
Uh, so next is Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, I, I don't have any other questions. I, I kind of skipped ahead a little bit in my question last time to, uh, some things in this section, so, uh, it's all been answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Raskin. Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, just a couple. Um, in, and it might be misplaced in the chapters, but in program 1F, we talk about 1133 units being developed in downtown. Um, is it, can you tell me, Staff, is this, is this based on the current, um, pretty aggressive affordable requirements? Or were those were based on some prior?
Yeah, so it's based on the, so it, it is, they, they were approved post-DCP. But as you're aware, within the DCP, there was, um, an allowance in there for kind of projects submitted prior to a certain date. You know, they had to meet like a 20% inclusionary standard. Um, so, um, most, I would say most of the projects in that number, the vast majority, were kind of like projects in progress, um, already. We have probably a handful, um, I think this question got asked, so we're, we're looking into, you know, we can split that up into what was, you know, what were things that were under, kind of, you know, projects in progress versus things that were outright governed, you know, under the, the rules of the DCP.
Okay, and then, um, going back a couple, like, on, on program 1C, a question I have is we're talking about potentially developing these surface parking lots behind. Is the concept in here that they can be, does develop in concert with the commercial? Or would, are we requiring these to be standalone? I know the implementation...
Yeah, I mean, I think that we are, we, we, we weren't necessarily expecting that it required the, the commercial to be, to be redeveloped on the boulevard, you know? Um, in theory, it's possible they could redevelop on their own, um, you know, with replacement parking or what have you. Um, so, you know, that, that was the idea. We, we weren't thinking like it would be redeveloped with the commercial site necessarily.
Okay, because it seems like we're gonna have to give some incentive for somebody to give up their, their surface parking lot for residential development, all right? Um, then I'm gonna jump down to 3C. We're talking about, you know, kind of for my own edification here, there's 770 units discussed in in 3C about losing their covenants. Are these in affordable, 100% affordable projects? Or are these in mixed income projects where, like the building next to me has one moderate rate restricted affordable?
Um, I believe, yeah. Rachel, are you able to clarify that? I think those are publicly assisted.
Those are publicly assisted, correct. And, um, Jim can probably explain the details, but they, I believe, but I believe they include local and, um, state assisted housing projects.
So these are, these are fully, fully deed restricted projects, 100% deed restricted.
Jim, can you clarify that? That was from the list that you have provided us?
I'm sorry, you saying, Jim or Jing?
Uh, Jim, sorry, yes.
Yeah, Jim.
I'm sorry, my hair is not so good, so, uh, wasn't making that distinction. Can, can you just ask the question again? I'm listening, but I need it repeated.
I am, I'm trying to figure out if in 3C, we talk about 770 affordable units being, um, potentially, uh, losing their affordability covenants. Are these, are these 100% afford, in 100% affordable projects where every unit affordable? Or are we worried about a mixed income building that has one or two units where they're gonna lose their affordability? Because the covenant's running out.
I don't have that page in front of me, but generally, it's, it's 100% affordable developments. I don't have that page in front of me, but generally, it's, it's 100% affordable developments. But, but having said that, it often involves these senior buildings that were built with federal funding, and in several cases, we're in the process of, of reworking out deals, at least potential deals, that we would bring to council as we speak.
Okay, because I'm not sure there's a question here, but, I mean, it's been my experience with these 100% affordable projects, and I guess the question is it your experience? Is, when their covenants are going to run out in 55 years, in year 40, or year 35, they're redoing their tax credits because they need to do capital improvements to the building, and in order to get that, they're extending it out for another 55 years, so. Again, that's been my experience. I'm wondering if that's what's happening in the city, in the city of Santa Monica as well.
That, that's correct. Often, what's, there's several things going on. For developments that are owned by nonprofit organizations, as a matter of law, they're, you know, they're organized under the laws of State of California as a 501(c)(3), they can't just operate market-rate housing because the deed restriction expired. So what, as you mentioned, one of the strategies they'll do is look to refinance, recapitalize the project, rehabilitate it. That's one. And so, the way we, at least the way I look at it, it tends to look at more, who, first, who's, you know, what's the ownership of the property? Is it a nonprofit organization? Or a for-profit? The, and the former is much less of a risk. It's usually, as you're mentioning, just a matter of how are they going to extend affordability for a, a longer, a much longer, another 55-year period, and what resources do they need?
Okay, so that to me just alleviates some of the concern we're going to lose them. We're going to lose them quickly. But thank you for that response. Um, then, and then Program, Program 4D, which we talked a lot about already. I had a lot of the same questions that have come up about why this location. And kind of my preference is if we were going to do, if we were going to go down that controversial rabbit hole, we would want to do it closer to transit and jobs. But we also have to consider what type of put on those sites as well. And I don't think anybody's really talked about that. Pre-unit project that gets built, isn't there potential to do ADUs and junior ADUs in there as well?
So under the current, oh, go ahead, Russ.
Well, so if, if you were developing a multi-unit development, JADUs would not be allowed, since those are only function with single, on single-unit parcels. But yes, if there was enough leftover space on a multi-unit development parcel, they could have the ability to add two more detached ADUs to maybe get to, I guess, a cumulative of five potential units on the parcel.
And, and Ross, isn't it also a potential that unused habitable space interior to the building could be used as a junior ADU, or another ADU?
Correct. Not, not a junior ADU, but yes, you can convert non-habitable square footage to ADUs, and that is a separate path than the detached. So you could get two detached, and if you had a rec room or even a garage, you could convert that as well to a potential additional ADU.
I, I think we also want to clarify that under current state law and how the city has implemented it, that it only applies to existing multi-unit dwellings, so not, like, you couldn't do that all wholesale as new construction altogether. The, the, the multi-unit has to be existing.
I understand that, but I haven't seen it implemented yet, but I've heard people talking about, oh, let's design a project with this in mind that we could do this. So it's, it's, somebody start thinking about it. And just to jump in, I believe we've received written correspondence complaining about that, right? That you can't do it all at once. Isn't that right?
Have. I don't know that it's prevalent. We've, we've received from one, one inquiry that we're aware of.
Multiple copies of the same, like, multiple iterations of the same request, I guess. Okay.
Right, right.
Okay, and then the last question I'm going to bring up is page 89, we talk about the cost per affordable unit of almost five, almost $500,000. I'm going to tell you that I have modular price projects right now, which are supposed to be cheaper, and they're coming in at 700, at $700,000. So I am concerned that this is, is low.
Yeah, and I think, I've, I've answered that, that question or clarification for Commissioner Lambert. That was staff's mistake. We, we've actually had HRNA run probably five or six different numbers depending on scenarios. So for 100% affordable, yeah, their, their numbers are more like the 655, so even, I think, higher than a commissioner, now what we're thinking, and closer to probably what you're, you're seeing for 100% affordable. The 480 really represents the total development cost for, to a, to a private developer for an inclusionary unit on average. And then there's sort of different numbers for, you know, the city subsidy. And, and then for like market-rate projects, it's, you know, quite a bit higher than all of that. I think it's over 750, I believe. So we will.
Okay, so you, you guys are aware of that?
Yeah, yeah, no, we're aware about page 89, and, you know, that'll be a revision.
Okay. Um, thank you. Those are my questions right now. Okay, which way, which direction are we going?
You're next.
Oh, we're, that's it, on five? Okay, um, I, I actually don't have questions on five, so, uh, let us now go to, um, all right, I think, is there a chapter? Uh, I don't think we have a chapter six. So what I'd like to do is now, we don't have a chapter six, so what I'd like to do now is go to, because I, I do have some questions if others don't, is go to the attachments. Um, so let's start, I'm, uh, sorry, when my computer crashed, everything crashed. Uh, so I apologize for being slow. Um, let us now, uh, I'd like to suggest that we look at the R1 Development Standards Analysis, the City-Owned Sites Analysis, and the FARHPP Analysis. That's okay with everyone, just to make sure we don't have questions about that. And we'll start with, we'll start with the R1 site analysis, and we'll go in reverse order. So we'll start with Jim again. I do not have questions.
Sean, where are you?
I am looking at the attachments to the housing element. So we're done with the actual housing element. We're now looking at attachments B, C, it's sections B, C, and D. Uh, it's the HRNA R1 Development Standards Analysis, the HRNA City-Owned Sites Analysis, and the HRNA FARHPP Analysis. Um, we've received public comment on all of that, you know, on bits of it. But I just thought we should go through it before we get into discussion to make sure we're all as informed as we want to need to be. So, Jim, Jim, you're good on the R1? Uh, let's go to, yeah?
I just want to clarify, those aren't actually the appendices to the housing element draft. They're actually attachments to your staff report, if you're looking at the agenda.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Just small clarification.
Yep. So there's a, does everybody know where I am now?
Yes.
Okay, so, Ellis?
Yeah, I, uh, I'll, I'll have more in discussion, but no questions now.
Okay, uh, Lisa?
I don't think I have any questions on that.
Leslie?
Well, other than what I had pointed out to staff the other day, that Wilmont is the wrong designation for this column, really being north of Montana. Um, I, I don't believe that there should be a different construction cost. I guess I should ask, why did you use it? I know why you did it, you use different construction costs, but from other architects, it's not accurate, so. It just makes it more unfeasible. It doesn't really kind of matter.
Would you, would you like someone from HRNA to, to address that question? About the difference in construction costs?
Yeah, I know the answer. I know the answer. They are, they already answered.
Well, I'd love to hear their answer. Let's hear their answer.
Um, Paul or Thomas, anyone from HRNA would like to take that question in terms of the difference in construction costs in the R1 analysis?
Sure, I can take the, I can take the question. This is Thomas Johnson from HRNA. Commissioners, the, the, I think that the answer is, is one that you're already aware of. It's, it's really a difference in quality, and we assume a higher quality of construction to justify the higher sale prices, which are almost twice north of Montana as they are in Sunset Park. So that explains the variation. But as Commissioner Lambert said, to increase the construction cost in the Sunset Park neighborhood would just make those prototypes less feasible and less able to support an inclusionary unit.
I guess my, my question, did you talk, did you talk to other architects and, and kind of look at what's going on in terms of construction of condos in Santa Monica?
We did talk to architects. Both John Kaliski Architects and Danielle and Associates have been working both on the diagrams for the R1 analysis as well as for other analysis. But again, we're happy to take additional feedback on construction costs for those sort of condo townhouses.
Is, is John Kaliski actually building condos in Santa Monica?
I don't know that he's built any condos in the past several years, but we can follow up and ask him that as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Preska?
Uh, no questions.
Commissioner Ponda Benardi?
No questions.
Okay, I have questions. So I'd like to get into, um, the, so if we look at page, uh, page five of the R1 analysis, I'm looking at missing middle housing, three units with flexibility to R1 standards. And I understand that it cannot support an inclusionary unit. You're suggesting that a 100% market-weight development is in Noma, not, not Wilmont, would be feasible if it maintains the height limits of R1 standards but not the lot coverage? Um, could you tell us what lot coverage you're assuming would be feasible?
Sure, this is Thomas Johnson of HRNA. So the lot coverage that we're assuming is shown, it's, it's very small in the diagrams on, on pages five and six, but we're assuming a 67.5% maximum lot coverage. Which is to say the, the combination of both the, the first floor and the second floor.
So, um, let me just bring Ross on here. I just want to, because we were doing these calculations with Ellis earlier. Again, assuming a garage conversion, we're still permitting garage conversions to ADUs, right?
Yes.
Okay, so assuming a 7,500-square-foot lot, 45% lot, well, 50% lot coverage, because it's an existing, I'm just looking at this, 7,500 times .5, 3750 plus 1,200, plus 500 for a JDU, that's 5,450 by 7,500. So, an existing home could achieve 73% lot, lot coverage right now if they converted a garage into an ADU and built a junior ADU. Am I not mistaken?
That is pretty much correct, except for the maximum would not be 1,200. It's 1,000 for a two-bedroom. That is all.
But if you're converting, but if you're converting a garage, we have to let them convert a 1,200-square-foot garage?
Not necessarily. There's still a maximum size of a, of a two-bedroom plus ADU, so if they had a bigger accessory structure than 1,000 square feet, they would not get to use all of that square footage. They only get 1,000.
Oh, I see, they wouldn't get the credit. So, so subtract 200 square feet from that. Okay, so.
I think if you did your math at 50%, which you had the 3,750, right? But if you added 1,000 and then the 500 for a JDU, it comes to 5,250, which is 70%. Yeah.
Which is 70%. So, so in other words, this missing, missing middle housing, I just want to really clarify here. On a 50% conversion, not a 45, so on a new build, and then on the new build, 7,500 times .45 plus 1,000 plus 1,500 is 4,875. Okay, so on a new build, it's, what we're looking at is actually, on a, on an existing build, it's actually less. And if the new, the new build, you would get 65% lot coverage, assuming 45% lot coverage plus, plus 1,000, plus 500. And you're talking about 2.5 more. Yes? In this, so when you say maintains height limit to R1 standards, the delta here is 2.5%. Yes?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so now let's look at, um, let's look at the next one on page six.
Before we, before we move on, Charles, if I can just clarify, for, for this scenario, which includes subterranean parking, this is the, the one shown on page five. The north of Montana prototype generates a profit margin of 11%, which, you know, we sort of regard as being marginally feasible. So some developers may be able to develop this if they're able to underwrite higher sale prices or acquire parcels less expensively. But it still could be challenging to, from a feasibility perspective.
Okay, so now we look at page six. And you are saying, for the same, okay, so now you're, now you're looking, you're having us look at, you're looking at this, and I'm just trying to, I really want to clarify what these adjustments are. So this would be a 35-foot height limit as opposed to the current 28?
Yes, the 28 is the current height limit, yeah.
So you're adding seven feet to that one? Okay, I'm just, and now, and now if I look at page seven, this is, this is to an R2 standard, yes, not to a R1 standard. So everything after page seven is too, okay, so, so if we were, I just want to be clear here about what is feasible and what is not. If we were to argue for the sake of, not for the sake of affordability, but for the sake of racial equity, that three units should be permitted in R1 neighborhoods. These are the two models, that, these are the two models that pencil, only pencil in north of Montana, and they are marginal. Yes? Is that a fair? Minimal to our, to our anti-mansionization rules, but, but they are, they, they are marginal. And then, what, when you were doing this analysis, were you, what did you do with the ADU and the JADU? Because if you, if this continues to be an R1 single lot, if we were to permit the three units according to the California law, we would, they would still have the right to add an ADU and a JADU to that.
Well, technically, even though it's an R1 parcel, it would still be considered a multi-unit development. So they wouldn't get a JADU, but they still would very much have, similar to what Commissioner Reese and I spoke about, they would have the ability to actually add more ADUs than just one.
So, is there in law, and maybe this is a Heidi question, I'm not sure, but I kind of need to understand this. Is there a permitting process or an exchange process that would allow us as the city to swap these options? In other words, if I do nothing, if I'm a homeowner in a single-family neighborhood, and I just want to go by right, I can build a J, an ADU and a JADU, and I can go home. Alternatively, is there a legal pathway for me to go to the city of Santa Monica and say, hey, I want to take my lot, I want to put up these three units. In exchange for the right to put up these three equal-sized units, I will waive my right to an ADU and a JADU. So that the outcome of the transaction is that instead of putting up three differentially sized units on one lot, the homeowner is putting up three similarly sized units on one lot.
Sure, so we could look into that. I would say my, the first concern that I would have is whether or not it's possible to ask somebody to waive their rights under state law. If the city has that ability to do that. And I do want to make one small clarification with respect to the, how the ADU law. If the city has that ability to do that. And I do want to make one small clarification with respect to the, how the ADU law is written. It's actually not necessarily written by zoning district. It's written by, it's, it is, it looks at what is the, what is improved on the parcel, what the parcel, what the parcel is improved with, or what the parcel will be improved with. Meaning, is it going to be a single unit dwelling? Or is it, is it already existing multi-unit dwellings? So it can be R2, but if you are proposing to have a single unit dwelling on an R2 parcel, you, the JDU and this, and the additional ADU rule would apply. Because it's on parcels with single unit dwellings or a parcel with multi-unit dwellings rather than what it's zoned for. Right, in terms of how, how it's analyzed.
Right. So for tomorrow night, I don't want to take up more time with this. Would it be possible to explore particularly in the because you wouldn't need to go through this exercise on R2, because on R2, you already have the right to build multiple units. So I'm talking about multiple similarly sized units. Whereas on R1, you don't. So what I'm talking about is would there be a way to preserve the R1 standard as, or the single family standard, but provide a pathway to exchange that exchange the, the ADU and JDU for three units of equitable, of, of similar size?
Can look at that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question, Don.
Yeah.
Isn't it true for those who might know the answer to this, that if SB9 passes, we get the multi-units? And the city then has the authority to prohibit ADUs? That's my understanding of SB9. And, and it looks very likely that SB9 is going to pass.
Well, my understanding of SB9 is that it would provide for that either or modality. But it, but it requires, but, but see, one of the differences here is that it would require SB9 provides for a lot split. So part of what, part of what I'm asking about is what would be the pathway to that alternative model of units? And Heidi might come back and say, there is no path to, no way to do it without a lot split. The problem is if you do a lot split, you're back to the original state law, which says one unit on one lot gets you an ADU. So that's why they were trying to solve that problem. I'm, what I'm trying to avoid is the wholesale upzoning of, of, right? And, and see if there's a pathway to going from three differentially sized units to three similarly sized units.
Well, the pathway is SB9, and I think we're going to know its fate before the housing element's final.
Right. And the pathway to parking lots is AD1401, but we can't put these into the housing element. That's why I'm asking the question. And those are imperfect. So, okay. Are we ready?
Can I make a comment about, about what you just said about the, the different sizes of units? So just a, a note in, in our analysis, what we found is that, you know, there, while there are sort of prevailing sizes of units for these condos or townhouses north of, there are, there aren't any north Montana, but in Wilmont and Sunset Park or elsewhere. The major issue is that there needs to be enough developable area on the parcel to justify sort of a sale price or a rental price, given how expensive land is. So the, the overall square footage that we're showing on page five and page six, I think exceeds what you would be able to, to build by right in an R1. So I think that, that the point that you're making about the combination of additional ADUs, adding up to the overall square footage is right. Just want to make sure that we're, we're clear that you would need to be able to build those three units to the, you know, roughly 4,500 square feet that are shown here for a project to be.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm, I'm actually, that is why I'm asking the question, that why I'm asking it, because I'm recognizing that everyone today has the right to 1,500 additional square feet if they produce them in a particular format. And what I'm saying is let's add everything up and see if we have a pathway to dividing that same envelope in a slightly different way. And I know there's implications. I know there's, you know, how many front doors and, and, and what's the parking and all that? That's, that's, that's for discussion. I'm simply asking if there's a, if there's a legal path to permit that through a minor use permit or some other streamlineable procedure that would not require all of us to sit in, you know, judgment on whether it's, whether it's a good idea. Okay, so with that, let's turn to the, let me look at the order here again. Let's turn to the city owned sites analysis. And we'll start with Commissioner Fonda Bernardi. Do you have any questions about that?
It was very straightforward, no questions.
Great. Commissioner Fresco?
Nothing to ask.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
I'm just curious to ask how many of you were around during the Main Street parking lot battle many years ago? It wasn't, it wasn't pretty.
I didn't think, I, I'm aware of, I heard about history. I didn't work for the city at the time.
Yeah, it wasn't good.
Commissioner Pastor? Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, just a, a quick question for the HRNA team. On page two, you listed the, I understand the Bergamot site as being five acres, which is about half of what it's identified as in other documents. I was just curious if there was a specific reason why you were cutting that off at five acres?
Yeah, I can answer that. Actually, the, the, the other part of it is taken up by the, the former Agensis building, that, that it's a long-term lease. So it doesn't include the whole site. So that, that was a correction, you know, that we made, we made here and will correct it in in other parts of the draft housing element as well, in terms of the actual land area available.
Got it. Okay, thanks. That's all.
All right, Commissioner Reese?
No questions.
All right. Can I just ask, I'm, 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 I'm curious. Do you have, and I know this was a, this is a broad stroke here. What kind of units these are? Are these like 80% units with like 120, with 100% moderate manager rate unit? Moderate rate manager unit? Or, you know, what, what's your assumption of the unit breakdowns here? Being breakdowns?
I can answer that question as well. This is again Thomas from HRNA. The, the assumptions that we used were actually based on, I think, the most recent four projects that were actually completed that use tax credits in the city of Santa Monica. So I think that they were a combination of large family and, and smaller unit projects, but they were all below 80% of AMI with, I think, a pretty substantial clustering below 60% of AMI. And so that was the assumption. It was, you know, basically using a an average cost per unit in terms of total construction cost as well as city subsidy on a per unit basis. And although there were variations between the projects in overall size and, and the actual income distribution and sort of focus of, of the projects, the clustering of the per unit city gap funding was quite similar across all those projects.
And so this would, this is the, this is the development capacity for the city, but it's also a realistic estimate of what an affordable housing developer would that this would pencil for the developer as well?
That's correct. So I guess there's two components of the analysis, the first of which is the sort of the actual, the density, which is 150 dwelling units per acre, which is relatively aggressive, but achievable for an affordable project. And then looking at the development potential and applying low income housing tax credit trends. What we were looking at was based on sort of past precedent. So it incorporates both the availability of tax credits and, and the ability of, of projects to be competitive for them, as well as the actual cost of construction.
With TCAC rents and TCAC unit sizes?
That's correct.
Okay. Great. And then one of the questions, so something that Commissioner Lambert and I have raised from time to time is the notion that when we provide 100% affordable housing on, you know, a site like this, we really ought to focus on the lower income bands. Because, and, and really encourage inclusionary zoning projects to increase the moderate rate, the moderate rate proportions, right? Because, because there's no good funding source for moderate rate housing. If these were all low, very low and extremely low units, right? And you didn't have, you know, you had a disproportionately low number of moderate rate units, would this still pencil? Or does it have to be an equitable mix of all four?
So I would look to city staffs to actually speak more about the trends of, of housing production and affordable projects. But in the examples we looked at, I think that, I'm, I'm not sure that there were actually, I'm just sorry, looking at one more of them. Yeah. And the, and the projects that we looked at, I don't think that there were actually any meaningful number of moderate income units. I think that they were all below 60% of AMI or below 50% of AMI, because they all leverage tax credits. So I don't think that, that, a different mix.
You mean, you mean 80, 80% of AMI, not 60?
In fact, in fact, the projects we looked at were actually, there were several projects that were below 60% of AMI and one.
Now, tax is about 80%. Tax is about 80% now.
Right, but that, even though they allow 80%, they were still going in at 50 and below.
Yeah, yeah, for the, yeah, for the projects that were, that they looked at, you know, the, the most recent ones, they, they are, they're, they don't get up to 80. But I think, you know, given that this is city owned land, you know, council direction with respect to city owned land is that, you know, the, the clear preference is that it be for lower income, very low, you know, you know, that, that kind of housing, permanent supportive housing. You know, that's really the intent. That's, that's been council's direction. So, you know, I wouldn't imagine that we would account for moderate on city owned property. You know, based on council's prior policy direction with respect to city on sites.
So this, I, this is such a short and sweet document that I am loth to add a slide, but it would be super helpful to have some of this background information made available, particularly when this goes to council, so that the decision makers understand that we're talking about that type of unit as opposed to moderate rate and that we are, and that we are really also that this is TCAC rents and TCAC unit sizes, because when we've had these conversations about affordable housing over the last few years, as you know, these are where the, these are where the, this is sort of where the rubber hits the road, that it's, that these are larger units, larger bedrooms that the, that were collecting TCAC rents and that this is, I mean, these are, this, this is, you're, you're delivering basically what this council historically has wanted, which is low, very low and extremely low income units that can hold families and have large enough unit sizes, you know, roof sizes. So this sounds pretty good and it might be helpful to sort of say that out loud in a, in the next version of the slide. Okay, are there any questions on the FAR feasibility modeling results? And we'll start with Commissioner Reese. No?
I'm going to say no.
Okay. And, and I, before, I just want to, before, I'm going to give you another bite at the apple. Right, there's the discussion that we have, we'll have to talk about and discussion about, are we adjusting FAR and affordability or are we adjusting height? Right? Are we keeping things where they are and growing the envelopes? Or are we moving things down? And that's what staff's asking us to, to talk about. So just want to check where you are. You still no questions? You're good.
Well, I, you know, this is part of the discussion we have to have as a, as a, as the city. I mean, nobody wants, I keep hearing from a lot of council people, or maybe I shouldn't worry about that, that they, we don't want to rely on density. So the increasing or reducing the reducing the affordability makes no sense to me. But I also don't hear a political appetite to go the, go the other way. So I'm leaning towards we should try to incentivize and get as much housing as we can, which would be increase the, the set asides and allowing for development rights that, that permit it. But I think that's more of our discussion topic than I have comments here.
That is right, which is just why I'm asking if you have questions about the assumptions here. Because I think we're leaning on the document more. Yeah.
The ironic thing is you asked this question before we went into the appendices if anybody had questions. I've said, we've said no all the way along, and then you keep asking us if we have questions.
Okay, I know. And they pop up as we go, which is why I'm asking again.
Okay, if they pop up, I'll raise my hand. Otherwise, you're just spinning your wheels.
I hear you. Okay, Commissioner Raskin.
You're the one who has all the questions, so why don't you just ask?
Yeah, well, I, we're almost ready to call it a night. Commissioner Raskin?
No questions.
Great. Commissioner Pastor?
No questions. And no questions on any other attachment or anything.
Commissioner Lambert?
I, I have a question. The, and I know it's not the council direction, but I'm frankly not bothered by that. Whether it makes sense from the standpoint of reducing the city subsidy needed by including some market rate units in these city properties? And, and I'm not, I'm not sure who to address that question to. Kind of the feasibility consultant would be able to do something between now and tomorrow and I can figure that out. I mean, if we don't, if we don't have local money and maybe we need an internalized, internally subsidized project to include some market rate units?
Are, are you asking us to estimate like how many market rate units we needed to, like, you know, what across subsidy would, would be required on city owned sites? Is that what you're asking?
You probably end up with the HPP program. So sure, that question is really worth pursuing.
I can answer that if you'd like, I think.
Yeah, go ahead, Thomas.
Yeah, so Commissioner, Commissioner Lambert, on the third page of the, the city owned sites analysis, if you look at the table and let me know if you're following the table there, but there's a, a row that says total remaining non-LIHTC funding, which is between 50 and 252 million dollars. So that is, you know, it needs to be funded from somewhere. Obviously, the city doesn't have 252 million dollars sitting in the bank. And so what we show in the bottom row is the total number of market rate units that would be required to be built to meet enough fee requirements to cover that 252 million dollar gap, which would be quite, quite a number. It would be about 8,300 units. But of course, there are, you know, it's not an either or. So there could either be a combination of city funding or a combination of funding through the in loop program, through the HPP. There also could be commercial development, for example, on portions of the city on site that could generate more revenue or different revenue.
Thank you. So if I look more closely, would it have, they had an asset claim? But my other point, I don't know if you feel comfortable addressing this, there is state housing money. And, and there will be hopefully more in the infrastructure bill passive. And there will also be more housing vouchers. I mean, I, I know you can't really account for all that, but I think it's something we need. So this is not necessarily all a local requirement. I don't know, maybe a footnote, I don't know.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand your answer, because in the year one, for example, the 208 units, if, to Commissioner Lambert's question, if we were sticking those units into the property, I mean, it strikes me, you can't have that many units in a affordable housing property and have it be qualified, right? So I think if I understood Leslie's question is if you, if you've built a project, what's the minimum for 100% affordable housing, you're allowed to have what, like 10%? There's some.
What are you talking about?
Well, if we were, I guess the question that I'm asking is, were you asking the question, if we built housing on city owned sites, did some small proportion of that shell contain market rate units? Is that the question you're asking?
That was, and I, I don't think it would be enough to totally subsidize a project, but it would certainly offset the city requirement.
Yes, and the question that I'm asking is, would the number, would, would the number of units be meaningful? Would the number of units required to make a meaningful dent exceed the proportion? Or would we simply separate, vest, you know, like, separate the parcels via vesting? proportion, or would we simply separate vest, you know, like, separate the parcels via vesting?
I, I think we would just end up with an AHPP project, frankly, the more I think about it.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking it.
Yeah. But, but yes, and I, community corp is going to have a role in the bonds project. So there's, you could, there's definitely a way to intermingle nonprofit and market rate now.
Right. I just don't know that there's an appetite to put, this is for discussion. I, we can, we can hold off.
Yeah. And I just want to be clear that the, like, what is on page three is the number of market rate units, like, needed to generate the AHPP fee. So it assumes that those units are, like, not on the city-owned.
Oh, right. That's the roof fee. That's the fee.
Right. That's, that's the, that's the, right, exactly. So, um, you know, that's market rate units, like, generally speaking, to generate enough fee. Um, this is, because we're not doing, we, we didn't do a site-by-site analysis. I mean, we could, I guess we could look at it. We, we just didn't do it this way. This was more just collectively, you know, across the three priority sites. And I, I think the question you might be asking Leslie is, you know, how much, almost like the, the, the Village project, right, which was basically 50/50 for market rate, and there's obviously a pressure component to it, and affordable, you know, it was essentially 50% affordable, 50% market rate. Um, and the condos, you know, subsidized, you know, there, there was a formula there. Um, I'm not sure we've dug down to that level, because we weren't, we weren't really commenting on like, what might fill that gap. You know, I think market rate housing is, is an obvious place to go, you know, but there are other, other possibilities. One, of course, there's the combination of public assistance in there. So it's, it's really hard to say, like, you know, what the, what the, we're making a guess, you know, in terms of.
Well, this, this Seychelles project at freshman City Hall is a classic example too.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's who you're talking about. Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't think we want to get into the granularity of it, because then you're talking about like live work units at Bergamot, and it gets really complicated. So, um, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. Okay. Um, let's go back to the, to the, um, the, the AHPP feasibility. So I think we were with, where were we? Um, we were with Leslie. So, uh, uh, Commissioner Fresco? Nope. Okay. And Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
No.
All right. And I have no questions on, um, these, no, I have no, I have no questions on these. So, um, let us, um, see, I didn't actually have questions, but some people did have them bubbling up. All right. It is 10:02 PM. We have completed, to the best of my knowledge, our questions on the housing element and the, the staff report attachments. Are there any other questions that nobody, that have come up for anybody? Anything else you want to ask?
My staff going to be at our next meeting in case we have questions?
Of course they are.
We are, we are always here for you.
They never, they never see the screen. They, they, they.
All right. Now Heidi, help me out here, because we've completed, we have, we have, we, what is the motion that we need to take a break until 5:30 tomorrow evening?
So you need a motion to continue this item until tomorrow at 5:30, and then the meeting will essentially recess until then, and you will, you will formally adjourn after you complete your discussion tomorrow evening.
Commissioner Reese?
Before we adjourn, can we ask staff to put back up the slide of the items they are asking us to ponder while we sleep tonight, so we can come back ready to talk about it?
Great idea.
Ross, can you, uh, put that up on the screen? And, and just as a note, we, we emailed the presentation to all the commission, um, and the slide is in that PDF as well.
It's also online.
It is. And to give everyone, while that's coming up, to give everyone a preview tomorrow night, assuming that we do this, um, the first thing will happen is that staff is going to give us answers to the various questions that we posed, for which they were going to bring us back some additional information. And we'll also do a quick round of unstructured questions to make sure that, you know, if you, in the course of pondering, realize that you don't know, you know, need a question answered, we'll do that at the beginning. Uh, and then we will go into a conversation, um, and we will have discussion in order of goals, policies, programs, and the SSI, um, so that we can presumably get some of these things off the table quickly, and then, um, get into details. But, uh, we'll structure it, goals, policies, program, SSI, because those are the dependencies. So, um, that's where we are.
Don't the goals and policies go together?
Well, the goal, yes, but the goals are like literally, each of those seven goals, we, a few meetings ago, we're wordsmithing the goals. I just want to make sure that we're all aligned, that the goals are written. It should take 30 seconds, unless somebody wants to rewrite a goal. If you want to rewrite a goal, please rewrite it before the meeting.
On the contrary, I want us to talk about goals and policies together, and not keep doing this.
Oh, I see where you're saying. Sure, you can do it that way. Yeah.
I feel like I might go insane from exhaustion from hearing you call all our names so many.
Well, I, actually, I have a suggestion. I mean.
Sure.
I find it really difficult to be doing the, doing things by chapter in some way.
Me too.
We're not.
Me too.
We wouldn't be. No, we're not going by chapter tomorrow. We're going.
We're going to go tomorrow by goals.
Goals. We're going to go by goals and policies. At Nina's suggestion, we're going to go by goals and policies. And then, once we've gone through all of the goals and policies, then we'll go back and look at all of the programs. Okay? Because the ideas, the programs are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Got it. Yeah, I got it.
And then the SSI is what should follow from the goals and the policies. So, and we, Heidi, do you want to say something about the high-level conversation about the SSI?
Um, I don't believe it's necessary. Um, and I will, but I, I might tomorrow. Yes, I will catch up with you.
Sounds good. Okay. Great. Then we're in good shape. Is, uh, everybody good? Continue to tomorrow night at 5:30. Is that your motion?
Yes, it was. I thought Commissioner Raskin raised his hand, so I popped.
I was gonna make the same motion. I'll second.
So you want to second this one? Great. Pastor, segmented by Raskin, and let's have a roll.
Commissioner, uh, Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Cheryl Landrus?
Yes. So with that, we are continued to tomorrow night. Uh, want to thank everyone who's born, you know, you've borne with us this, these many hours. As a reminder, we will not have public comment tonight, so we appreciate everyone who took the time to call in tonight. Um, to, to people who took, we will not have public comment tomorrow, and we appreciate everyone who called in tonight. Uh, and, uh, but I believe our emails still work. Um, let me ask for clarify, for clarification, and, uh, would it, will additional, uh, correspondence be posted?
Uh, no. Um, it will not be, because the public comment, the, very clear the cutoff was 12:00 PM for written comment, um, and that's been publicly noticed on the agenda. So it, it will not be posted.
Good.
So anybody knows that. All right.
We add thank you to, um, um, Carolyn, who took over for, um, was it tonight?
Yes.
Um, and good job. And thank you, staff, as always, to get them amazing.
Thanks, thanks, everyone, for a very clear staff report. We appreciate it. And we will see you all tomorrow night.
Night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Right.